Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I will call the meeting to order. And we are reconvening our open session. And I'd like to, I don't believe we have any, Madam Clerk, any actions taken in closed session?
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do.
On a seven to zero vote regarding claim number 637246, the governing board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection of claim pursuant to Government Code, Section 913. The governing board further authorized the Vice Chancellor of Business Services, or her designee, to issue any appropriate notices.
Thank you for that. We'll now have the invocation led by me and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Milchiker. So if you are able, please stand.
Okay. I think we all know much of the media coverage last week in Congress focused on passage of the foreign aid package. But within that package, there was a little-known provision, also signed into law by the President. Congress reauthorized the Eli Wiesel Genocide and Atrocities Prevention Act, which codifies the prevention of atrocities as a national security interest. This act institutionalizes American efforts to prioritize the prevention of mass violence, requiring the federal government provide an annual report on current U.S. efforts to prevent and respond to atrocities, and a global assessment of ongoing atrocities in countries at risk of atrocities. So for those of you who don't know, Wiesel was a prisoner in German concentration camps. He was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize in 1986 for speaking out against violence, repression, and racism. In accepting the Nobel Peace Prize, Wiesel said, and I quote, "There is so much injustice and suffering crying out for our attention. Victims of hunger, racism, and political persecution, writers and poets, prisoners in so many lands governed by the left and by the right. Human rights are being violated on every continent. More people are oppressed than free." End quote. But that was 1986. Have we made progress? So today, we know that mass atrocities persist around the world fueled by impunity, hate, and armed conflict. And a crime unpunished is a crime repeated. So I bring it back to this district. And what I feel is special about what we do here is we do reject hate. We do promote inclusion, free speech, academic freedom, and the right to dissent. All very important. So today, I ask that all of you join with me in our small corner of the world here. And let's continue to reject hate, racism, violence, and indifference to injustices. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. Thanks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now on to public comments. We do have a few. Just to remind everyone, we do limit public comments to two minutes. This is something we just do. You're not being targeted for a limitation in two minutes. Everyone is limited to two minutes. I've been informed, we do have a board policy that says comments on a single topic are supposed to be limited to 20 minutes in total. But I'm not planning to cut anyone off. I think everyone who wants to speak tonight, I think we'll give you the right to speak because you're, thank you for all, all of you for showing up. So with that, I'd like to ask Jennifer Hedgewell to come up, followed by Emily Blumenthal. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it was hard to.
I'll blame her. No. Sorry. Oh, you can go to the podium.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hedgecock. A letter on behalf of Ashley McCauley, who is part-time faculty in Health and Wellness. My name is Ashley McCauley, and I've been a part-time faculty since 2014, serving the Coast Community and South Orange County Community College districts. Over the past 10 years, I have dedicated my life to student success. And I have spent endless, non-paid hours on campus projects to make a difference in the student experience. I wrote and implemented a certificate program. I have served on various committees. I have attended every department meeting. I have created diverse and engaging sessions for faculty and staff during flex week. I participate in continuing education. And at the end of the month, I struggle to make a living. As a part-time faculty in continuing education, and at the end of the month, I struggle to make a living. As a part-time faculty, I have maxed out on teaching LHEs at both colleges that I teach for. And compared to my husband, who is a tenured professor at Saddleback College, my salary is about half of his. While I might not ever have the privilege to apply for a full-time position in Health and Wellness in these two districts, I have hoped that my steadfast commitment to our student body would be appreciated financially. I continue to give my entire heart and soul to my students, only to suffer financially each month. I can't even save for retirement. I have wondered for many years why part-time faculty is not paid the equivalent hourly amount to full-time faculty. We're teaching the same material, doing the exact same job with the exact same workload. Our students are the same. Why are we paid so little? Please value your part-time faculty. Thank you.
Thank you. And as she's walking up, the following two will be Allison Camelot and Emily Quinlan.
Esteemed members of the Board, thank you for allowing me to address you today. As a second-year faculty in the Department of Child Development and Education here at Saddleback College, go Bobcats, I have witnessed firsthand the dedication and hard work of the Board and our faculty in shaping the minds of tomorrow's leaders. Yet despite our mutual unwavering commitment to our students at this institution, I must highlight a pressing concern: the need for a livable pay increase based on the Consumer Price Index. I can personally attest to the financial strain associated with living in Orange County. And the Consumer Price Index is a better indicator of inflation and the increasing costs of goods and services essential for everyday life. If pay does not keep up with these increasing costs in the long term, quality of life, and importantly, faculty's ability to focus fully on their teaching, service, and leadership roles will be compromised. I love bragging to my fellow millennials about how much I love my job and how much I love working at Saddleback and how I never want to leave. So tonight, I ask you to please ensure that faculty of this district can continue to live in the community in which they teach. Investing in our faculty is an investment in our students and the future of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Allison Camelot, and I teach in the Sociology Department. I'm actually reading something for someone else, a part-time faculty member, Joanna Keebler McNairy. I love working at South Orange County Community College District. I've had nothing but good experiences with administration, staff, and coworkers. However, as a part-time employee, the reality is that it's becoming increasingly more and more difficult to live close enough to South Orange County to continue working for this district. Even though I teach the same classes and the same level of expertise and commitment as my coworkers, I do not receive the same pay. The discrepancy in pay parity is not fair. And it also means that part-time faculty cannot afford to live in the same area where they teach. The colleagues, the colleges rely on part-time faculty. Without us, the college programs wouldn't be sustainable. We need to receive the same pay as full-time faculty. I support and applaud the Faculty Association and the full-time faculty at SOCCCD for standing with us to fight for us to have pay parity.
Thank you.
Good evening to the esteemed members of the Board. Thank you for having us this evening with our public comments. My name is Emily Quinlan, and I would like to read to you, excuse me, a note that I received from a student mailed to my home address last week. It is on the White House letterhead. Dear Professor Quinlan, thank you for all of your support over the years. I vividly recall our first Zoom meeting in fall of 2020 and discussing how I felt like a failure for all of my goals. Nearly four years later, thanks to your constant support, I'm writing you a letter from inside the hallowed halls of the White House. You've touched my life in so many ways, from letters of recommendation to mentorship to campus tours and everything in between. You inspire me to be a better version of myself and to fight the good fight wherever I go. Excuse me. I know that however far I go in life, it will be thanks to you and Saddleback College. I'm truly blessed to have such an impactful and supportive person in my corner. I know, I hope I can make you and Saddleback College proud and inspire others to recognize the brilliant and amazing Professor Quinlan in their lives. Thank you for everything. Best regards, Elijah Robles. And I just brought this to your attention because this is one of thousands of letters of respect and gratitude and appreciation that the faculty at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College receive. And this doesn't just happen. This is because of the hard work and, as a speaker before me so eloquently stated, gives their heart and soul every day to their job because we love the job and we are so grateful to have an opportunity to be a part of our campus community. But I respectfully submit to all of you that we cannot do this on bread and water alone. Most faculty cannot afford to live within a 50-mile radius of Saddleback and IVC. And if they do live outside that radius, they cannot afford the gas to commute on their multi-campus teaching assignments as part-timers. So I would just implore you to consider these important facts and focus on the amazing success and opportunities that are presented to our student, as Elijah so beautifully stated, and for you to consider the points of concern that have been presented by the Faculty Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Next up, we have Jessica Budica. Is that correct?
Budica, yeah.
Budica, sorry. And then Lisa Alvarez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jessica Budica. I'm a full-time English faculty professor at Saddleback. And I just wrote something down so that I didn't trip up today. So starting salaries, they play a pivotal role in attracting top-tier faculty to colleges. And they serve as a powerful incentive that reflects the value that is placed on us as faculty members, on both our skills, our experience, as well as the contributions that we potentially will make to the college. It's time for us to stop losing the best faculty in the area due to our starting pay. When I started at Saddleback College as a faculty member, as a part-time faculty member, I taught five classes at three colleges. I was a property manager for 39 condos. And I was also a wedding planner. And I did all of that so that I could afford to live in the area and also pursue my teaching career. Even now, as a tenured professor, the pay I started out with in comparison to the cost of living in this area, it doesn't match. People tell me all the time, move! Texas is calling! Come to Tennessee, where it's cheap. But I love it here. I don't want to leave. And anybody who's ever talked to me about my experience at Saddleback, they know that I pretty much lived off of bread and water so that I could teach here because I didn't want to teach anywhere else. But I know people who have passed up on working here also because the starting pay and the cost of living in the area are just too far apart. Our faculty needs to be able to work here and buy a home one day for their families. I'm a full-time professor. My husband is a nine-year attorney. One might think that we could afford to buy a home here. We both have very well-respected jobs. But maybe we could. But I don't want to then sacrifice telling my daughter she can't play soccer, or, sorry buddy, you can't play T-ball in the fall. And food prices are outrageous. My bread cost me $7 the other day. I don't know why that is. I just, I don't want to have to make that choice. And I shouldn't have to to work here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Alvarez, Irvine Valley College, English professor, co-director of the Puente Program. Happy to be again in this meeting room with you all to speak to something that's so important. And I really appreciated President Jamal, your reference to 1986 and if things had gotten better. So tonight on my phone, I have a little reference to a board meeting from May 2004, 20 years ago, recorded by my office mate, Roy Bauer.
Whereas Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, like other community colleges in the state, have been relying increasingly on the overuse of part-time and temporary faculty and lieu of hiring an appropriate number of full-time faculty. And whereas these part-time faculty are generally paid at a rate of less than 50% of the equivalent full-time salary, a practice out of compliance with the principle of equal pay for equal work. And whereas these part-time faculty have little or no job security, no rights of due process, and therefore no true academic freedom because they teach under the fear they could be let go at any time and for any reason.
20 years ago. We've made some progress on some of those issues since then, but not enough on the ones that people are speaking to tonight. And I think it's time to do that. People have talked about the economic reasons for this. I also want to think, ask you to, and I wrote it down here so I wouldn't forget, to help us keep the promises that we teach. I am so happy to be teaching in this district at a time when we are valuing diversity, equity, and inclusion. I want you to think about who our part-time faculty are. Primarily at our institutions and across the country, they are women. Many of them are single mothers. They are people of color. They are children of immigrants. They are the first-generation students that we champion and mentor and hold up at our institutions. And yet, when they get to the point where they can begin to teach and give back, they are often exploited and betrayed. Right? Because I think we have the habits of fiscal, I don't want to say responsibility. We make priorities. And those decisions fall on the backs of those people who, when they come to us as students, we value and pour resources into. But when they return to us as faculty and instructors, we do not. And I think it's time, 20 years after that meeting in this room, and I think it was only Marsha Milchiker who is still on the board here, that we do the right thing for our part-time faculty. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have Michelle Doherty and then Dan Dierle. And then as they're making their way up, we have two more formal requests, Kurt Meyer and Carmen Mara Hernandez.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Doherty. Having taught entry-level freshman reading, writing, and critical thinking for 15 years, I've been privileged to touch many lives as they've deeply touched mine. I've seen my students develop their own voices, engage in academic discourse in the fashion of a senior seminar. Many student letters I've received over the years attest to my teachings, saying how they've grown as writers in my class, how pivotal change in perspective was brought about a paper they never thought they could write, dreams unfathomable. Excuse me. These are reminders of why I do what I do each day. But these do not feed us. They do not pay the rent. They do not get the car fixed or deal with rampant inflation. I have only good evaluations and priority status as an adjunct, but my classes are regularly subject to reductions and cancellations, and often at the last minute, which wastes precious time and becomes time without pay. This makes me often question my purpose or value here after nine years in the district. How did I get here? A distinguished master's graduate with a Berkeley diploma, Phi Beta Kappa. The working conditions, perpetual instability and financial hardship also affect my family. I oversee my elderly father's care, which can be all-encompassing. But I'm between a rock and a hard place, not able to afford time off to care for him or pay caregivers to help. As an active participant in equity programs on campus, I hope we can, with integrity and institutional discrimination of myriad varieties. How can we turn a blind eye to the treatment of those who work so hard for all these causes? There are people before you tonight who should be seen, heard, and remedied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Chancellor Barnes. Good to see you all. Many, many years ago, my colleague Lisa Alvarez and I began as adjunct faculty at Irvine Valley College. We were welcomed into a department that shared their full-time offices with us, that treated us as colleagues and mentees, and that really, in many ways, taught us how to teach. I would like to see those same opportunities continue for our part-time employees here upon whom we so badly depend. In our English department alone, we typically employ between 35 and 40 adjunct professors to help us fill out our writing courses every year. My colleagues have spoken eloquently about gas prices, about grocery costs, and certainly about housing in Orange County. I think it is time, as my colleagues have said, to take this even more seriously than we do. I know that budgets are difficult things. But we're here for education. And we are able to hire outstanding adjunct professors, not only because of the atmosphere that we create as a department and the care, I hope, that we give to them, but because we are in a district that has, in the past, tried to raise their wages during this rather difficult year as inflation has run rampant. I ask the Board and the negotiating team to consider the needs of those who are indeed making wages that do not allow them to live close to either campus. And these folks now have to pay exorbitant prices for gasoline just to get here and to all their other commitments. This is a very special place. And I'd like to keep it that way. And part of that is valuing our part-time employees as colleagues. And with that, I hope that you will consider this. And thank you for the time to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, excuse me, Rebecca Kaminski. And I'm actually reading something on behalf of Kurt Meyer, who couldn't be here tonight. Dear Chancellor Barnes and Board of Trustees, my name is Kurt Meyer. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. As a Faculty Association past president, I'm reminded that the district's and the Faculty Association's relationship is a partnership. Our partnership is sanctioned by the faculty who elect the FA officers, including the President, who in turn directs the FA negotiations team. Similarly, our partnership is sanctioned by the voters and residents of the South Orange County Community College District, who elect Board of Trustees, who along with the chancellor, in turn directs the district's negotiations team. As such, our faculty and our voters and residents are counting on us, on both negotiations teams, to act as partners, to respect one another, to work with one another, and to negotiate in good faith. To this end, I urge the district's negotiations team to make a reasonable offer, counteroffer, to the Faculty Association's negotiations team. A 0.78% raise for full-time faculty is not a reasonable offer. A 0.78% ignores the fact that the cost of living in Orange County is 53.9% higher than the national average. Without a raise in six years, faculty have lost buying power and consequently either can't continue to afford to live in the area they work or move into the area if they get a job in our district. 0.78% underscores the fact that meaningless markers like state COLA for pay increases do not accurately reflect the economic need of faculty. By contrast, the Consumer Price Index is a better indicator of inflation and the increasing costs of goods and services essential for everyday life. Finally, 0.78% is an offer unbecoming of the outstanding Teacher of the Year we're honoring tonight, and unbecoming of each and every faculty member, part-time and full, who dedicate themselves to educating and supporting our students. Thank you for your consideration. Your partner, Kurt.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Carmen Mara Hernandez Bravo. And tonight, I came to thank especially two board members. Last year, April 2023, Trustee Jamal and Trustee Terry came to meet with us, the faculty members and employees, to ask how the school is doing. We had a wonderful conversation. And I asked you that day if we could honor next April the contribution of the Arabs in the United States, especially in Orange County. And so today, I want to thank you so, so much that number 12 today, you are honoring this amazing population. So just please cut me for my two minutes. We honor the rich heritage, history, and hope of the more than 3 million Arab-Americans across the country who have helped write the American story and move our nation ever forward in boding the truth and diversity that has always been in our country the greatest strength. People with Arab heritage were among the many immigrants who came to our country's shore with a ranch of culture, custom, backgrounds, and beliefs, sharing a common courage to start new chapter in one anfielder land. As they build their life, they helped build America from fighting for our independence in the Continental Army to serving the cause of freedom during World War II, to helping build cities and communities across our nation, often in the face of discrimination and hate. So, Trustee, thank you. Thank you so much for listening to us and this month honoring the heritage of the Arabs community in this school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that concludes the written request for comments. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a comment? Please.
I too am here to speak on behalf of Kurt Meyer. I didn't plan on anything, so if I'm a little disfluent tonight, I apologize. I've never, I don't teach at a college in Orange County. I'm a retired public school teacher. Kurt is a good friend of mine. Kurt is a good friend of mine. He spent, he was at our house dozens of times, sharing his intellect, his humor and his good cheer. He's a godfather to my children, and I've, I've spent countless hours trying to counsel him to change careers or to add additional education so that he can do something else when he retires, so he doesn't have to scramble to support himself and his wife. That, that this is an issue I feel very passionate about. I can't believe what they, what these people get paid, and it's maybe three-quarters of what a public school teacher makes. And it's, I think it's a travesty. I, you may have picked up that I am from a different part of the country where things tend to get a little bit more militant for issues like this. And where, where we know that Boards of Trustees, and I hope this does not describe yourselves, they act, they act to support the will of the people who support them behind the scenes. And so all of these good people have prepared very cogent arguments. I hope they're not just wasting their breath and that you do, you don't simply act on the, the support of the people behind you who just want you to get whatever you can for the lowest amount possible and that you pay these people fairly for what they do. And by the way, because my wife and I are also, my former wife and I also were public school teachers, my, two of my children with GPAs of 4.4 and 4.8, they're going to community colleges now because we can't afford the UCs they belong at. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I assume no more additional comments? Okay. All righty, we're, we're now going to move on to board reports, and I think I'm going to start, I think I started with you last time, so I'll start with trustee Milchiker.
Turn on my timer here. I'll, I'll just mention the most inspiring events I attended this month and thank all of you for speaking. It was very interesting. The LA Times recognized Chancellor Barnes as an inspirational woman, and we already knew that, though. The IVC Humanities Job Mixer by Professor Kristin Skansky actually had people in diverse occupations give their students ideas for unique career paths, and her delightful mother was one of them. The IVC Arts Village opening, the buildings are exquisite. Each room showcased those in that discipline, including music, dance, aerial acrobatics, visual arts, graphics arts, fine arts and gallery. The IVC Puente Program speaker Hector Tobar was very inspiring. At the AAC, AACCC meeting, the preeminent event was Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society Breakfast, where I was honored to be there when our own IVC Student Government President Diego Victoria was recognized as one of the only twenty college students in the United States for the 2024 USA Academic Team, and he won a $5,000 scholarship. Congratulations, Victoria. That was really exciting. Surfing Days was a joyful, newly-minted IVC musical. The graphics by Professor Beckman and interactive media art students at IVC were incredibly creative and fun. IVC students filled the audience and enthusiastically cheered. She Kills Monsters was performed at Saddleback College and delved into the world of Dungeons and Dragons. The Saddleback students loved it. We, I accepted proclamations honoring the Community College Month at Laguna Woods City Council Meeting, the Board of Supervisors Meeting, and the Mission Viejo City Council Meeting. Saddleback College, one book, one college this year, was, was on Temple Grandin's book, Visual Thinking. She's neurodiverse, and as a child, she did not speak. Her highly-educated parents didn't want to institutionalize her, as the docs suggested, but gave her speech lessons, a job, a feeling of accomplishment, and a feeling of importance. She designed animal pens, which was a huge success to farmers because she could think visually. She emphasized how important it is for all of us to hire those who think in pictures, as those skills are essential in so many professions. I enjoyed reading her book and chatting with her. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make it short. I attended the IVC Arts Village opening, and I have one word: amazing. It was absolutely amazing. My esteemed trustee to my left, trustee Anan and I, we received the proclamation from the mayor from Aliso Viejo two weeks ago. It was a very nice situation, and the audience, I think, was very pleased. I also attended Saddleback College Foundation Meeting. But the two things that I just want to share quickly are the two meetings that I attended. One was called the Black Studies Success Week because last week it is now put, I guess, at Sacramento that we celebrate a Black Student Success Week. It was an innovative approach to ensure that Black and African-Americans succeed in community college. Their focus was on the BS, the bachelor's degree at community college. The three leading ones are Foothill College, West LA, and Mesa College in San Diego. Now, the one I really liked was the Foothill College because they have a program for dental hygienists, and there were several people on the panel, graduates and students, one present student from there. And it was remarkable, their enthusiasm of what they've learned and what has happened, and it was just amazing. One person has three jobs, but she has a full, permanent job. She just loves what she, she does, and it's all because, she said, of her bachelor's degree from the community college. The one thing I didn't, I felt sad was that they were asked how many Black students are in their classes, and the most were two. So this has to change. We have to get the diversity into our bachelor's programs. Hopefully, we're going to get them here. And the coalition of advocates within this community college are only going to make it more successful if we transfer our students to community, to our California colleges. The other meeting that I went to was called, let me see, it was Vision and Action for Equity: How Exclusion in California Colleges/Universities Continue to Hurt Values Students in Democracy. I was surprised by the letter that they presented. It was among higher education governing leaders, the system leaders, campus leaders, faculty, academic senate bodies in California, said that colleges and universities still remain unacceptably low. And in their recent release report called Still Left Out, it provided a sobering update from the 2018 report to now that limited progress has been made. I mean, all I was doing was thinking, come to Saddleback and IVC, and maybe we can share what we're doing that isn't happening at your college. But it, I'm wrapping up. All right. So thank you very much.
No, you did great. A little bit. Trustee Inman.
I'm going to do an impression of my friend, Dr. McDonald, and not really give a report this evening. All I want to say is I went to--
I wanted the impression.
No, that saves, that saves time. I'm saving time. I've been to all the things that have been mentioned, and what I got out of it was that we have amazing, amazing leaders in Orange County, whether it was the Estrella Awards or the, the LA Times luncheon. It's just so inspiring to see how many people do how many good things. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Trustee-- Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, I too attended the, the speak, speaking engagement from Professor Temple Grandin. My wife and I have been known about her for quite a while, both in my role as being the advisor for the Neurodiversity Club at Beckman and my wife's experience in teaching a number of autistic children in her programs. So it was really, really, really nice to be able to meet her, and it was, it was a very special day. I think she got a kick out of it when I told her that I've only taken off time from teaching for two people, the President of the United States and her. So it was, it was really a very nice event. It was very nice getting to meet and talk to her and have her sign the book, and I'm really glad that we had that opportunity. So thank you for putting that together and all the people that were involved with that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dec.
So I was fortunate enough this month to attend the IVC Arts Village opening, and I'm very excited to see all of the creativity that is going to start pouring out of that complex. I was thrilled to see all of the different mediums and artists that were on and showing their, their work and how the programs that they have operate. I think they had aerial, I think that's what it's called, like when you're in the air, and they have the, the, I don't even know what, the fabrics, aerial fabrics, that's what it is. I didn't even know that was a thing here at IVC, so I got to learn a little bit there, too. I was also fortunate enough to attend the Distinguished Lecture Series with Hector Tobar at IVC through the Puente Program, an author I had not known about and professor I had not known about. And I think I'm just a little bit better now than I was before in my experiences and how he shared his experiences with his students as a teacher myself and as someone who has Hispanic heritage. It really did touch me in a lot of ways. And then finally, I was proud to have also been present for the Puente Program end-of-the-year celebration. There were just so many fantastic stories from people who grew up in difficult situations where maybe they only had one or two people in their lives supporting them and saying, hey, you can do this, and having that community really pushed them to go farther than maybe they even expected, to get into schools like UCLA and Berkeley. It really was fantastic to hear about students from our institutions achieving such great heights, and I'm really proud to have been a part of that.
It's good, a lot of clapping tonight.
It's only for the people who kept it short.
I understand, I'm not going to get it, so. I get that. So one of the good things about being Board President, and as you go last, and everyone's covered a lot of the things, so. But I will say that Arts Village ribbon-cutting was a real high point for me in, in the year so far, and just being able to have the ability to kick off that event in that setting on that day was fantastic. And my congratulations to everyone at IVC for what that's going to bring to the campus in terms of creativity. It made it-- my daughter used to attend Music Camp in Northern Michigan, and it just felt, and there were, you know, little clusters of, of huts, if you will, or cabins around, it's called Interlock in Northern Michigan. And they, there's violin playing in one, and then the drums and the guitar, and there's dance, and it just felt a lot like that. So it was really wonderful. We had the chance to go to the County Board of Supervisors this week, or last week, I would say, and they unanimously recognized the value of, of community colleges, and I was there with Dr. Hernandez and then Letitia Clark. So it was really wonderful to get that recognition. We were at the City Hall, Mission Viejo, our home city here, and they delivered a wonderful tribute to the, the South Orange County Community College District, even though it houses Saddleback here. Also attributed a great praise to Irvine Valley College in both. So it was nice to see that there with Dr. Stern, and trustee Milchiker was with me. I really appreciated that. And then yesterday, I want to thank Chancellor Barnes for attending with me a dedication in the city of Irvine for a new Armenian genocide memorial monument. It, obviously, I think people, most people know it, something close to me. And, and I, I thank the city of Irvine, Councilmember Mike Carroll, Larry, Larry Agron, Tammy Kim, and Kathleen Trissater from that-- and I have gone over-- for, for their work in making this memorial happen, not only to what happened in the past, but in the future, and we have a resolution later I'll talk about. And the last thing, sorry, is I got a tour of Saddleback Campus before the board meeting, an excellent tour by Sean Rival, Assistant Director of Facilities. I thank Sean for doing that. Saddleback College is receiving a water conservation award for its work conserving water and, and its landscape architecture that's taking place, that changes across campus, and there's going to be an event this weekend. So if you want to come, come to that. So thank you for, for letting me go over. Broke my own rule. Okay. Student trustee Hitty.
Thank you. Saddleback ASG dedicated the second week of April to celebrate Pride Week on campus with events ranging from LGBTQIA+ movie night, drag bingo, and a pride student panel to help foster an inclusive learning environment and embrace our students' identities. Promoting sustainability and environmental consciousness has also been a top priority for both Saddleback and IVC this month as both schools celebrated Earth Day through events including clothing drives to raise money for local nonprofits, a petting zoo, and booths from local and campus-wide environmental groups. As Finals Week and commencement approaches, both schools have been busy planning transfer celebrations, honors award ceremonies, and stress buster events for the month of May. In related news, this will be my final board meeting serving as the student trustee for the district. I wanted to take a moment to thank the district employees and trustees who have welcomed me into the position and my peers who entrusted me with this position. I'm infinitely grateful for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to taking everything I've learned this term as I transfer to UCI in the upcoming fall semester as a part of their campus-wide honors collegium. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I look forward to seeing how the South Orange County Community College District continues to grow in the upcoming years. Thank you.
You will be missed. We have a few, we have a few things to say about you in a few minutes, so stick around. All right, next up are the ASG reports, so we'll start out with Saddleback College.
Hello, all right. Thank you, everybody. We have been holding our final events of the year. We just had our Senior Day where we showed clubs, such as ASG and programs, such as our honors program to rising seniors to, from our local high schools. We hosted our Around the Globe event to celebrate international students and diversity on campus. We hosted a Gay Pride Week in April. Success was led by our International Diversity Student Council Senator Brandon Nakuna. We had such event, we had such a drag queen bingo, which had a large turnout. We had a Earth Day event where we collected used clothes to let students essentially thrift for them on our quad. And we also had a animal petting station, which had very large turnout. Big thanks to our Senator for Campus Life, Holly Bargan, and our Campus Sustainability Senator, Megan Laurel. We had the privilege of hosting Professor Temple Grandin to host a lecture and book signing on her book, Visual Thinking. Her book has been read across our campus all year. I got my book signed, and I got a picture with her. I also saw trustee Prendergast and trustee Milchiker there, too. We're also preparing for commencement later at the end of the month, and we are also having, we have a great opportunity for a China research opportunity to visit Tangshan, China, and meet with Tangshan Polytechnic College to do a cultural exchange and visit other culturally significant areas in China. I am working with our Director of International Student Program, Angela Yang, to see this passed. And I'd like to dedicate the rest of my report to the topic of student housing. I know that item 8.2 discusses to identify student housing needs at Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. I'd like the members of our Associate Student Government to please rise. We are in solidarity with our students who are experiencing homelessness or couch surfing, and would like to see this plan passed for student housing to help our students in need. Thank you very much.
IVC ASG.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again. I'd like to start off by talking about something that unfortunately wasn't talked about too much in tonight's board meeting, but it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month. That is, April is the month of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and IVC had a couple of events. We did have an event on Denim Day to raise awareness for the victims of sexual assault and other sexual aggravated cases. That's something very important, too. A lot of people, especially, you know, us being a college campus, I feel like it's a very relevant and important topic for everyone. In addition to that, on a, on a lighter note, I did attend the Arts Village opening, and it's great to see IVC have more infrastructure and, and ability for students to pursue the arts. You know, being an all Steinway school, I think that's an amazing opportunity for countless students around Orange County and beyond. And sticking on the topic of facilities, the IVC students strongly supports the upcoming facility plan on tonight's docket, which does have student housing at the, at the tail portion of that plan, which is very important. There are also a couple of other great things. There was a Mesa Center grand opening, and the Mesa Center is for educationally and financially disadvantaged students who are pursuing STEM careers. And I want to give a shout out, a pug shout out to a dear friend of mine, Diego Valencia, who was admitted to his dream university, UCLA. He's worked very, very hard, and he is a, a mem, was previously an EOPS peer navigator alongside with me and a Mesa participant. We're looking forward to have a couple more events, such as the EOPS Recognition Celebration, but also, as this is my second-to-last board meeting, it's great to see the, the new faces of everybody incoming. And I'd like to give a moment to shout out Charlotte Clemente, who is the upcoming student trustee, and also Clarice Encarnacion, who joins us tonight, who is the upcoming student body president. So if Clarice, you could please stand. So I'll, I'll let Clarice give a moment to introduce herself during tonight's budget presentation, but it's always great to talk to you, and I'll, I'll talk to you again real soon. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Diego. Moving on to the IVC Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
Good evening. Today, I stand before you to advocate for two crucial investments that promise to shape our future and that of our colleges. First, I will speak of the transformative potential of approving our student housing funded through basic aid. The proposal for dedicated student housing at IVC and Saddleback is a strategic step toward removing barriers to our students and their education, removing barriers for our students, excuse me. With 320 beds at IVC and 400 at Saddleback, we will be tailoring our approach to the unique needs of our student body, offering them the stability needed to excel in their studies. By using basic aid funds, we're making a financially sound decision that respects our strategic goals and existing resources. This initiative is not only about providing a roof over our students' heads, but it is about building communities that foster learning, growth, and success. The phase planning for the housing ensures that we remain flexible and responsive to the evolving needs of our students and the future landscape of our institutions. In lockstep with the commitment to our students is our dedication to our faculty. Our faculty are the cornerstone of our institution's academic excellence. By offering competitive compensation, we affirm their value, attracting and retaining the exceptional talent that drives student success and elevates our district's reputation. Engaged and well-compensated faculty are more committed to student mentorship, professional learning, and teaching innovation. Their impact goes beyond the classroom walls as well, extending into our local economy, enriching community life, and fortifying our regional workforce. Investing in our educators enhances our stature, ensuring that we maintain high standards of accreditation, and become even more attractive to prospective students. When we prioritize fair wages, we're not only acknowledging the worth of our faculty, but also solidifying our colleges as exemplars of educational excellence and innovation. Therefore, I am morally advocating for your support to these vital initiatives. Each is critical to fostering an academic environment where educational excellence, communal engagement, and unwavering support are held in the highest regard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Good evening. Tonight, I would like to highlight the work of our Saddleback faculty, administrators, and classified professionals around AI. During Spring '24 Flex Week, they presented a series of AI workshops for the various schools. They also collected suggestions for faculty to put an AI policy on our syllabi. They developed guides and identified online resources to help with AI in the classroom. Our librarians developed and held AI literacy workshops for students, which is greatly needed. One suggestion was that students who had been plagiarized through using AI could be referred to those workshops, which I think would be an excellent idea. This team also arranged AI tools for faculty. We have now an AI mentor called Priya in Canvas. We have Microsoft Copilot. They developed workshops and new AI course for Fall '24, which is Intro to AI Course for Instructors. I will probably be one of the people who take that. Our CIM, that's Computer Information Management, faculty created new courses over the last couple of years, and in spring of 2026 will offer a new AI and data science certificate. And they will also continue to work on establishing responsible AI guiding principles and develop policies to direct AI usage on campus, and particularly in the classroom. Finally, I urge you to take to heart the statements of our part-time faculty who give their blood, sweat, and sometimes tears to their students, who really are all of our students. They deserve the absolute best that we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you. Faculty Association, Melanie Hayeri.
I'm going to stand. I am so humbled and so honored to represent our faculty. You guys are so amazing, and it's such a point of privilege to be able to represent you for the Faculty Association. So, thank you, thank you for all you do, and tonight I want to especially thank, especially thank and honor all our Teachers of the Year. Congratulations. We're also honoring two faculty who have served the district, who are retiring this year, Janine, and I know I'm not going to say it right, Obukun, and Ted Weatherford. Our faculty are amazing, they work so hard, and as the school year comes to an end, and as my term comes to an end, I just want to thank them for allowing me to have this position to represent them, and I'm just, I'm so humbled. Thank you.
Is this your last meeting as president? No, Nick, I'm sorry, I keep mixing it up.
Sorry, no, you gotta put up with me one more time.
Okay. All right, we won't praise you yet, then.
Yeah, not yet.
All right.
Guys, we haven't had any actions yet. We haven't voted on anything yet. Nice try, though.
Trouble. All right, that was, that was good. Okay. We're now on to the IVC Classified Senate. Ace.
Good evening, everyone, I feel like it's been a while. Hello, so I wanted to take my time today to recognize a former employee of the district, Marcela Reyes, who served as IVC Classified Senate Vice President of Equity. Her last day with us at the district was last Friday, April 12, after helping host a very successful DEIA Day at IVC. In the five years she spent at Irvine Valley College, Marcela served three of those years as the Classified Senate Vice President of Equity. She also served as a Tri-Chair for the President's Advisory Council on DEIA, a very strong and passionate advocate for IVC's DEIA initiatives. She was also integral to the implementation of caring campus at IVC, conducting training not only within the college, but also statewide. Even up to her last few weeks with the district, she was also busy helping plan and host Classified Day. She now serves as the new Director of Research for Cabrillo Community College. We, as a Classified Senate of IVC, did pass a resolution to recognize her contributions to IVC and to our district. While it was sad to see her go, we wish her well and best in all her new endeavors. With this new vacancy, I am happy to announce that our new VP of Equity has been appointed. We have officially appointed Julie Scholl, who currently serves as the Coordinator for AESL, as our new VP of Equity for Classified Senate and our new Tri-Chair for PAC DEIA.
Thank you for that. Now, we move on to Saddleback College Classified Senate, Sean Till.
Good evening, trustees. I want to begin by shouting out our ASG group, who has been outstanding this year. I had a lot of fun at the drag bingo this month, and as well as a lavender celebration to celebrate our students, and you can tell a lot of love and hard work goes into the event, so great job. I want to celebrate and share that Saddleback Caring Campus team recently held a successful roadshow for classified professionals on how to apply for professional development funds to increase awareness about the process of utilizing PD funds and increasing their participation in professional development. The Saddleback Cares team is also currently planning to hold more peer-to-peer skillshare events during Flex Week this fall to continue to support our colleagues campus-wide. We're also currently hard at work to bring back the flower sales at commencement this year to support student and classified scholarships in partnership with our foundation. We are also looking forward to elections being held this week to support ongoing leaders in Classified Senate, and I'm excited to continue to support the Senate in the role of past president. As many of us are getting ready and gearing up for the fall semester and gearing up for transition to banner, a second shout out to Chris McDonald. I want to thank our classified professionals at Saddleback and across our district for all of the hard work that is selflessly conducted every day, and that truly contribute to making Saddleback College a special place to be. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You're going to have to say something tonight. All right, CSA President Scott Green.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Barnes, Student Trustee Hitty. First of all, we are getting ready to go to the CSA Annual Conference. We have five delegates from our district between the two colleges, and we're really looking forward to it. That's going to be taking place this July, the last week of July up in San Jose. We also have, every year, CSA, they recognize a classified employee as called the unsung hero. From our particular district, we actually approved and selected Haley King from Irvine Valley College as our unsung hero. She does a lot of sacrificing for us and does a lot of work that most people would not recognize to help CSA. She does research, she currently is doing a lot of work in the office to be able to make things better for our members. So, this Saturday, she's going to be honored as an unsung hero, and I'm going to be introducing her for that. At the CSA Conference, one of the things we are going to be discussing is how we are going to take what state funding we may get in different parts of the K-12 and community colleges, and how we're going to try to maximize those, because we know some K-12s will not be able to do that. But I feel very passionate about education. I come from a family of education. My sister is a teacher at a private academy in New Jersey. My mother is a librarian who now retired, but is an avid reader, and my dad, I'm very proud of him, he's been teaching for over 60 years. He, at age 89, is still teaching in a school system in New Jersey. So, education is everything, because when you reach students, you need to reach the heart, you reach, you need to reach the mind, and you need to reach the soul. That is education. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for that. I don't think we have anyone here from POA, I don't see any board requests for reports, we have no public hearings. We're now on to 6.0, Resolutions. Item 6.1, and I will start it. As the Board President, I'd like to take a moment to thank Student Trustee Caitlin Hitty for her excellent leadership on our board during her term in office. In addition to the resolution, we'd like to honor her with a commemorative plaque. On behalf of the 40,000 students and the South Orange County Community College District, we thank Student Trustee Caitlin Hitty for her commitment, dedication, and service, and I, I just want to say what a joy it is that you've been here as our Student Trustee for this past year. You've added such value to our board and the depth of our discussions, and I did really enjoy reading your short story in The Wall. The way you opened up was very impressive, and you have a very bright future, so thank you. All right. We have a few more things to say before we do the presentation. Trustee Edman.
Okay. Item 6.2 to 6.7 are to recognize the district's Teachers of the Year. On behalf of the Board of Trustees.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
You were supposed, you did it.
Oh, sorry. Yes, let's present the plaque. Boy, I have two faux pas, so I'd like to recognize Caitlin's mother, Susan Hitty. You did a pretty good job. Congratulations. All right. Now, Trustee Edman for the remainder.
Back to the future. Okay, Agenda Item 6.
Oh, we have to vote on it, yeah. Okay, do we have a motion? Motion from Trustee Rydell, second from Trustee Milchiker. Let's vote on the resolution. The motion carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Congratulations again. All right, now, we are on to 6.2, Irvine Valley College Outstanding Full-Time Teacher of the Year. Trustee Edman.
Third time is a charm. 6.2, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Sanjay Gupta as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Full-Time Teacher of the Year. May we have a motion? Please vote.
I believe we have some folks in the audience that represent this. Just to let you know, Teacher of the Year are here tonight.
Oh. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
All right, did we have a second?
We did.
Okay, good. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Okay. Number 6.3, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Roy Zipstein as the Irvine Valley College Outstanding Part-Time Teacher of the Year. May we have a vote?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Rydell, second from Trustee Milchiker. The resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
Okay. Item 6.4, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Jun Chung as Irvine Valley College Outstanding Emeritus Teacher of the Year. May we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, vote, please.
Hold on. Motion, Trustee Dack, second from Trustee Milchiker. Let's vote. Motion carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Trustee Edman.
6.5, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Kiana Tabidzadeh, I hope I did it right, as the Saddleback College Professor of the Year.
And she is present as well.
Oh, good. Can we have a motion?
Motion from Trustee Rydell, second from Trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a six-to-zero yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations.
Six, oh. Go ahead. You can clap.
Might as well keep it going. You can clap.
6.6, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Brooke Campbell as the Saddleback College Associate Professor of the Year. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Dack. Let's go ahead and vote. Resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Okay. 6.7, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Elizabeth Chavez as the Saddleback College Emeritus Institute Associate Professor of the Year. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who moved and seconded?
I moved it.
Okay, Trustee Milchiker moved. Second, Trustee Dack?
Yes.
The resolution carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Congratulations to all these fine teachers moving onward.
Still on.
Thank you. 6.8, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby recognize, honor, and appreciate the many contributions of classified employees to quality education in California and in our district, and declare the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as Classified School Employee Week. A motion, please.
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker.
And a second?
Second from Trustee Rydell. The motion carries on a six-to-zero trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote.
Okay, 6.9, The Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District recognize April 22, 2024, as Earth Day throughout the district, and encourages all students, faculty, and staff to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote the well-being of the inhabitants of our district and the protection of the environment. environment. May we have a motion?
So move.
Motion trustee Milchikir.
Second.
Second from trustee Prendergast? All right, let's go. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote.
Okay. 6.10, the Board of Trustees of the South Orange County Community College District hereby encourages the colleges and all employees and students to commemorate Armenian Genocide Day on April 24, 2024.
Motion from trustee Rydell.
Second.
Not sure who said the second. Trustee Milchikir.
You wanted to second it?
No, no, I don't need to second it. Thank you. I just, I want to take a moment to thank this district and Board of Trustees and everyone in the community here. I know I talk about this issue a lot. It means a lot to me and to everything that I do, actually, in my second or third job. My wife just went, came back from The Hague last week and presented evidence to the prosecutor of the International Criminal Court of ongoing evidence of genocide that's taking place against ethnic Armenians, both in the sovereign territory of Armenia and also in a territory that's indigenous to Armenians called Nagorno-Karabakh. So, this resolution does talk about the past 1.5 million Armenians who were murdered in the Ottoman Turkish Empire between 1915 and 1923. Miraculously, and I've said this before, my grandmother, her name was Maksin Bahadurian, she had eight brothers, 11 brothers and sisters. She lived in a town called Kaisri, which is in the Ottoman Empire now in present-day Turkey. Eight of her brothers and sisters were murdered by the Ottoman Turks. Miraculously, she did make it out, only herself, her mother, and her sister in 1923, who managed to get on a ferry from Istanbul or Constantinople to Ellis Island, and then to Detroit, where I grew up as a descendant of genocide survivors. And I thank you, Chancellor Barnes, again for attending with me yesterday the dedication in Irvine. These things are important. We must, if we don't remember, then past becomes prologue, and we're seeing it again and again. So, thank you very much.
Okay, 6.11. Oh, sorry.
We need to vote, right?
Yeah.
The resolution carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
6.11, the South Orange County Community College District, on the day of May 6, 2024, students, staff, and faculty are urged to observe the Day of Remembrance for Victims of the Holocaust in an appropriate manner. Motion, please?
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchikir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second trustee Prendergast, and I think trustee Milchikir wants to say a few words.
I'd like to also thank everybody for, particularly these difficult times, for remembering the Holocaust, where 6 million Jews and as well as many, all the gays and all the people they considered undesirable, and the gypsies were just all murdered because they were considered to be ethnically undesirable. And in that time, from 1941 to 1945 in Nazi Germany, 2/3 of the Jews in Europe were murdered, and half the Jews in the world were murdered. And there was a very fast time when murder took place. They called it the, anyway, that during a single three-month period in 1942, from 1942 to 1943, 1.7 million Jews were murdered in an intense 100-day, three-month surge. And they said the kill rate was higher than the other comparative genocides in Bosnia, Rwanda, Darfur, Burundi, Syria, Myanmar, and I guess probably Armenia. And the thing that people might not remember was that no country in the world would take the Jews in. They, they wanted to get out. My father-in-law wanted to get out. He wanted to get his family out, his children out. But no country, the United States had a very high quota rate. They wouldn't take the Jews in. Matter of fact, there was a boat that came all the way from Germany to Dacton, Cuba, and they tried to get the United States. They wouldn't let them in. They sent them back to Germany for their death. So, no country would take them in. So, at the end of the war, they decided to give the Jews a little bit of land and the Palestinians a little bit of land, each one to have their own country in the Middle East, where the Jews were from and where the Palestinians were living. And the Jews took it so gladly, so they would have a place to go if it ever happened again. And the Palestinians turned it down because they didn't want it if they gave Israel some land, if they gave the Jews some land. And that kind of thing happened over and over again. So, people just don't remember that or don't know that. And it's important, like we said, it's important to remember, my, my father-in-law and mother-in-law jumped out of a second-story window, and they, they survived by living in a rabbit hutch for two years, and their whole family, hundreds and hundreds of people were killed. They lived in a city called Vilna, Poland, which was called the Jerusalem of Europe, which had like 10 theater departments and 10, a whole bunch of Yiddish newspapers. And the whole city was, was killed. Everybody in it was killed. And they were killed by mass shootings, by, by having people go naked into big buildings and putting poison gas in, having them breathe this poison gas like they do for insects, and killing them that way. Can you imagine killing a million and a half people in three months? And 100, and a million and a half of these were children, small children to big children. So, it's something that, that people would say, never again. They don't want anything like that to ever happen again. And I, I don't want to go on and on, but it's, it's something in people's souls and in people's memories, and, and it's something that people have to remember. It's very important. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Did we vote on that one?
No, we're voting right now.
Okay.
One more to go.
One more.
The resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Our final resolution of the evening.
The South Orange County Community College District officially recognizes and celebrates National Arab American Heritage Month during the month of April, and encourages all students, faculty, and staff to learn about and honor the contributions and achievements of Arab Americans throughout history. Motion, please?
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchikir.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Let's vote on the, on the resolution. The resolution carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. That concludes our resolutions. Thank you, trustee Inman.
You're welcome.
And we're now on to trustees and chancellor items, first being 7.1, OCSBA Board of Directors Interest Form. I believe that we have someone who's on the board, correct?
Yeah, but my term is not up.
Oh, okay.
I just got renewed last time.
So, is there any potential action item here or no?
The legislative, someone could step up to be the legislative representative.
Okay. Is there any interest in someone in being the legislative representative to the OCSBA? Okay. So, I'll move trustee Inman to be the legislative representative to OCSBA.
Okay, I'll second that.
I have a second. Trustee Milchikir. All right, let's go and vote. The nomination carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.2, Authorization of Payment to trustee absent from board meeting.
So move.
Motion trustee Milchikir. Second trustee Rydell. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion. The motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.3, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study.
I have a suggestion.
Okay, first, we had a motion trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Second trustee Dack, trustee Rydell.
Yes, I just wanted a suggestion. Thanks. Policy 4103. Okay. And I don't have enough fingers here.
Those are, those are the next one.
We're doing them in order, I thought?
7.3.
Yeah, so that's the next item.
Okay, I thought, okay. I'll wait.
Yep. Okay, we have a, a motion and a second on 7.3, so let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.4, Board Policy Revision for Approval.
So move.
Oh.
Second.
Motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Inman.
I have a suggestion. From the 7.3, 5300, we talked about disproportionately impacted students. We took away disadvantaged. And then, if you go to 7.4, 4103, if you go to 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, paragraph down, you use the word disadvantaged again. I just thought you could implement disproportionately impacted students because that's what we're calling now.
Can't do it until we approve it.
You're just too hard tonight.
Pointing out the facts.
That's fine. We could approve it after I just said it.
So, yeah, once we approve the ones that we just voted for review and study.
We did?
No, but. Just, go ahead.
Once we approve those next month, then they would have to go back and change all language.
Okay.
So, bringing this to their attention is helpful because it's one less thing they have to search for.
Right.
But it won't happen until it's approved.
Next time.
Vice Chancellor Gable.
So, are you wanting the language changed in 5300, or are you wanting the language changed in 4103?
The language in 5300 will change the language in 7103, once it's passed, based on what she's saying.
No, they're, they're separate. And, yeah, let me pull up.
Yeah, right here.
Okay. In 5300, we changed the name to disproportionately impacted. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to make a big deal. It's just that when I was reading it, I thought we could change it for next time. So, go down to the third sentence up from the bottom.
Wait, so we're on 5300?
No, now we're on 4103, sorry. The district ensures that economically disadvantaged students, I'm just calling it what you, what we talked about in 7.3, disproportionately impacted students. I was just giving you a different adjective that we mentioned in 5300.
Which paragraph? Okay.
Just happened to see it.
Okay.
Where, where are you looking on 4103?
I pulled it up now. I just want to look at it.
The third sentence, right here.
So.
Because I think, because the state uses disproportionate impact as a technical term whereby when you disaggregate data and you look at gaps, it's considered disproportionately impacted. So, it's like a technical term from the state that they assign with our equity plans. And on this one, I think they truly mean like disadvantaged. It doesn't necessarily have to be, have equity gaps.
Okay.
So, I think they're purposely using different language.
Well, I did read it.
No, it's like a keen eye, for sure.
That's fine.
Do you want to offer the language?
No, we'll just disregard it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. The most, the item carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory, student trustee yes vote. We are now on to our presentations. We have four. Buckle up. Let's start with 8.1, IVC and Saddleback College, Tentative Student Government and Student Representation Fee Budgets for 2024-25.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see you all again and talk to you again later in this evening. My name is Jada Victoria and the current student body president, for those who don't know. And I'm accompanied with Dylan Ferrer, the current vice president of budget and finance, and Clarissa Carnassio, the incoming student body president of IVC. And today, we'll present to you our tentative budget presentation for the next fiscal year. And so, we'd like to highlight some major components of the budget. To start off, we have $560,000 for the next fiscal year with a projected $190,000 beginning balance and a projected $200,000 ASIVC access sales. And for some background information, the ASIVC access sales is the ASB sticker in which students opt in to purchase at the beginning of their academic year. What this is, a $10 opt-in fee in which, once you have this ASB sticker, you're allowed to be a part of all the clubs and co-cure programs on campus. It also has some benefits for students, such as some free scan trons and green books, and some discounts for amusement parks and movie theater tickets. However, this sticker price has not been increased in over 10 years, and it has been affecting the student government budgets for both IVC and Saddleback. So, I'm proud to say that I led on an increase for this sticker price, and I'm glad to see that Saddleback joined in on suit, which was at first a tough challenge, but I'm glad we're here to present it to all of you tonight. And so, today, on the board agenda later, which I believe is item 10.1, you will all vote on the increase of the sticker sale price from $10 to $17 per semester. And this is in comparison to the prices of other community colleges in different districts around Southern California. What I'm really proud about this sticker sale price, though, is that the students that are most impacted from educational and financial resources will not be affected by this increase in tuition or fee. Programs such as EOPS and Promise Program, students in these programs will not have to pay for this, and these programs will continue to pay for it. So, we have budgeted and present to you our budget with this in mind, that the Board of Trustees will vote yes on the sticker sale increase, which will greatly support all the clubs and co-cureers on campus. With that being said, we have a projected $160,000 bookstore revenue and a projected $10,000 in other sources of revenue. So, go ahead and start off with the first line, item A, which is the beginning balance of this fiscal year is $627,000 compared to the $190,000 of the next fiscal year. And the beginning balance from the unused funds of '23-'24 will be adjusted for the adopted budget based on the final actuals of this line item. Down below on line item B, we have the ASIVC access sales for summer, fall, and spring. And fortunately, the ASIVC access sales have exceeded projections, and the sales for the next fiscal year and academic year are expected to remain consistent with the current year actuals. And now, the projected revenue reflects the proposed ASIVC fee increase, which shows the $80,000 gains and the budget change. In bookstore commissions, this academic year is $150,000, and they're expected to exceed projections, and we anticipate similar sales for the next fiscal year. Next line item is the cafeteria and vending commissions. This line item is blank because Irvine Valley College currently does not have a cafeteria, so we do not have any source of revenue from this. Traditionally, pre-pandemic, when the cafeteria was open, ASIVC would receive a percentage of the revenue from the cafeteria. The last item, E, other revenue, which is LAIF and county treasury interest from all different types of accounts from the community college district and from ticket sales, was $3,000 this year, but it also comes, also, it will increase for the next tentative budget year for $10,000. And I would like to say and point out, which I'm sure many of you Board of Trustee members may have questions, as to why the budget decreased from $900,000 to $560,000. And it all comes down to a couple of simple things. To start off, we no longer have any COVID federal relief funds or HERF funds. And also, because during COVID, we had all these, this money and all these funds, but there were no activities on campus because the campus wasn't open. So, then when we had this money rolled over, now we're beginning to actually use this. And of course, the cafeteria vending, lack of cafeteria revenue does not help either. And with the bookstore pre-pandemic, there was a guaranteed contract structure of $450,000 per year. Now, post-pandemic, there is not that guarantee, reflecting the current numbers. Moving on, and lastly, I'd also like to point out something, a discrepancy, in case you may ask, is the bookstore commissions. On the actuals, it is blank. This is just due to a technical error, and the fiscal office of Irvine Valley College is working on receiving this. Simply put, the check is in the mail. We'll have that soon to you. Now, down below to the use of funds for ASIVC events and programs and club program and support. We all use of the funds reduced to meet the reduction of the budget. They're reduced across the board, not only for co-cure and clubs, but for ourselves as well. And we can see that it was decreased from $138,000 to $71,000 for ASIVC events and programs, and $57,500 to $44,300 for the club program and support. On line item G, the contingency line, it was previously $90,000, and it is now $56,000. The contingency fund is a 10% of our budget, in which every fiscal year, no matter what the budget amount is, we have to set aside 10% for contingency fund. For the actuals of this fiscal year, it is blank because we have not tapped into our contingency funds for this fiscal year. Down below for student life nondiscretionary, we have 315- Down below for student life nondiscretionary, we have three hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred compared to the two hundred forty six thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. Something I'd like to point out is that money saved is money earned. And Irvine Valley College does have the OCTA bus contracts with the service provider. And there was contract renegotiations, restructures, thanks to the support of people in the administration office, the student life office, and ASIVC were able to save seventy five thousand dollars while still keeping the bus fee, the bus access free for all students. And so thanks to this seventy five thousand dollar save in our budget, we can allocate, you know, what this would have been instead of for, for student life nondiscretionary funds, now for co-curriculars and club program and support. For student services and scholarships, there is a hundred twenty eight thousand seven hundred, down to sixty thousand eight hundred. Co-curricular and instructional, the last line item, is a hundred seventy thousand, down to eighty thousand eight hundred. And once again, all of our, all the use of our funds were reduced to meet the reduction to our budget. I would like to say that thanks to the fiscal prudence and financial conservative actions of ASIVC, during this juncture, there's about to be a hundred thousand dollars as a final balance. And we're going to use that for half of the contingency, and the other half, we're going to spread equally across the five spending categories. And so we're really proud of ASIVC for, for doing the most with what they have. And I've always said that the next group of ASIVC students will have to deal with the cards they've dealt with, but we're the ones responsible right now for dealing them with those cards. So I'm glad to put them in a, in the best fiscal position as possible. And I'll pass on the mic to Dylan Ferrer, which will present the SRF.
Thank you, Diego. Hi, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Barnes and Student Trustee Hitty. My name is Dylan Ferrer. I am this year's vice president of budget and finance, and today I'll be covering the student representation fee. The student representation fee is a two dollar opt-out fee that is mandatory by the state, according to Assembly Bill fifteen oh four. One dollar goes to student advocacy efforts, while the other dollar goes to state share of fees. I can go deeper into the student representation fee, as you guys can see in line A. We are expected to fully expand our twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget for this year. So we will not take use of funds from the beginning balance because it is zero. However, in great news, we have exceeded projections for this fiscal year for student representation fee. And this is just due to the fact that we had an increase of enrollment. With the increase of enrollments, we anticipate to reflect that in next year's budget. So we'll make adjustments to forty thousand dollars compared to the thirty six thousand dollars from this fiscal year. With the additional funds, we have three different avenues for these use of funds. The first being travel. The main category for this is, what I previously talked about, is our student advocacy efforts. One of the biggest trips that we go on from this account is the annual Washington DC trip, where we relay the South Orange County Community College District legislative priorities to congressional people in office. The second being the district administration fee, as you guys can see in line D. The district administration fee is just, is just a seven percent fee that is taxed by our home entire budget. And lastly is the state share of fees I previously talked to you guys about. Our district just pays an annual invoice that goes through the chancellor's office, and that's basically it. Thank you, guys. And I'll now be passing along to Clarice Encarnacion, the next ASIVC president, and she'll be talking about our accomplishments.
Hi, y'all. I'd like to take a moment to introduce myself. So as you all know, I am the president-elect for ASIVC. I'm a first year at IVC, and I live in Costa Mesa, so I do commute to Irvine every day for the opportunity to attend IVC. Not to dog on OCC, but much better opportunities here in Irvine.
We, we won't tell them you said that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I am a biochemistry major as well as applied mathematics. I tutor chemistry and calculus at the Mesa Center. Very lucky to work there. I work with amazing peers that go to IVC and UCI, also Cesar Montenegro. He's done a wonderful job with the program. The Mesa Center is like a beautiful hub for STEM students. And I'm, I'm very excited to see what that program will bring to students long-term. Now, ASIVC fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, we have contributed in four different areas. So the Student Senate has contributed to DIA. We've had student advocacy efforts, student activities and engagement, and student leadership development. Now, as for DEIA, this year, our Student Senate adopted the first ever anti-discrimination resolution. A lot of our members in the judicial branch recognized that we did have an anti-racism resolution, but we needed a resolution that was a broader scope in terms of anti-discrimination. So yeah, that was a wonderful effort put together by our judicial court. Also, as for student advocacy efforts, this year we participated in the ASAC National Student Advocacy Conference in Washington DC, where we had congressional visits to advocate for our South Orange Community College District legislative priorities. So we advocated for basic needs as well as increasing financial support for community college students, such as double X-ing the Pell Grant, and also we had support for DACA. And for student activities and engagement, ASIVC hosted a plethora of activities for the student body, such as Club Day, de-stress events, and Halloween activities, scholarship events, and Welcome Week to facilitate student life. And as for student leadership development, we participated in the annual leadership retreat at the UCLA Lake Arrowhead Conference Center to really build that cohesivity between our members so we can have a productive body, and we were really productive this year. And I'm very proud to have been a part of this legislative body, and I'm very excited to see what next year will bring. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, yeah. And so we'll open for, for any questions, especially for the, for the sticker sale increase. Like I mentioned, it was, it was definitely a, a, a big thing in line items. So if you have any questions before you go on and vote, it was led on by IVC, and so I'd love to answer anything or anything about the budget.
First of all, great presentation. We'll open up for questions. Trustee Edman.
I'm worried about you guys starving to death. Are there plans for a cafeteria or anything?
Yes, yes, there are plans for cafeteria that is in the works for the, for Irvine Valley College and the facilities plan. It's something that's going to be started for the next, next academic year, and we're definitely going to have that sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee, trustee Milchker, then trustee Prendergast.
Okay, so this is a wonderful presentation. I'm so, so happy to meet such fabulous students that we have. I also have to mention that a friend of mine's granddaughter goes to IVC, and she went with the students to Washington DC. And she said she can't believe the incredible things that the students get at IVC. She got to go to Washington DC to help advocate for the students. She, she, she thinks it's, it's wonderful. And then I said, I, I told you that, but she actually found out firsthand that it's wonderful. So, and I always, always believed that the best advocacy people are the students. Because, you know, I could go and lobby a legislator, they say, oh, she's, you know, she's a trustee, it doesn't matter. But if the students talk about how it means to them and what, how important the school is to them and what it means for their futures, it really makes a big difference. I also wanted to ask, where do the students eat now at, at IVC?
Yes, so, so the previous year, there was a food and service in which it was catering, catering services to IVC. Currently, now there are food trucks. There are a couple of different food trucks that come on different days, and they just rotate on the type of services provided. And there is a student discount, which definitely does help for students, since it's one of the only options available on campus.
That's great. I know the food trucks now are very, very popular, but when IVC was first founded, all they had was a food truck, and they called it a roach coach. So back to the roach coaches again. But I mean, it's a whole bit, it's a whole, the new, the new food trucks are really fabulous, so.
I'll definitely say they're a lot better and tastier, so I wouldn't really call them a roach.
No, I, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
I have to interject. I did eat from the food trucks at IVC, and there was, they were very delicious, very tasty. A little pricey, but, but yeah, I know. Okay. Trustee Prendergast, did you have a question?
Just wondering if you could speak to how you came up with seventeen? Like, from ten to seventeen, it's quite a jump. You know, some of us like to stay on fives and zeros, and just, just, what, what was the, the process behind that?
Yeah, so that's definitely, you're definitely right. It is, it is a jump. But after further conversation with the student body, we tried to reach a price that was beneficial for not only student government ourselves, but also the students. We took a look at all of the sticker prices among different community colleges in the area. And in total of thirty four dollars, it is, it is around the average and below average for some community colleges. I know for others, such as Orange Coast College, it's about sixty dollars per year. And so although it is an odd number, we wanted to make sure that it was reflective of what we need in there, in our, in our budget. And so beforehand, we were looking and exploring different options in the Budget and Finance Committee of what figure could, could mostly support us without, you know, hurting and having a decreasing marginal value with that. So that's the reason why we came with that seventeen dollar figure. Still supports ASIVC and is still on average and, and, and below, still affordable compared to a lot of other community colleges in Southern California.
Okay. And do you have anything in place to kind of, lack of a better term, trigger raises on a more regular basis rather than waiting ten years? Is there been discussion about having a, you know, some indicator as to why you would need to increase or maybe decrease in the future?
Yes, so, so definitely, that has definitely been talked about of whether or not we should increase or the next student government group should increase that seventeen dollars. We are looking forward to the cafeteria reopening. So if the cafeteria does reopen, that would be a great help to our sources of revenue. So there wouldn't necessarily be a need to increase that sticker sale price. Now, I'm sure down the road, we'd want to do that sooner rather than later before another over ten-plus year mark. But we would want to have it to be exorbitantly high, you know, to be, you know, thirty dollars or, you know, as, as Clarice mentioned, IVC has a lot more opportunities than OCC, so we don't want to have as high as fees as they do. Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I hope OCC's not watching tonight.
Yes, if there's any other questions?
Yeah, I did. I just want to understand, is it the budget a little bit? Maybe I'm reading incorrectly, but you have projecting five hundred sixty thousand dollars in income, and you're projecting to spend five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Is there some, am I not, am I reading that correctly?
So, so right now, that is just the projected tentative budget. We do have all these line items budgeted, and, and you are correct in that part. But for example, this fiscal year, we had nine hundred thousand. We had a budget to spend every single dime, outside of the contingency fee, of course, for both fiscal years. But we were able to save muddy and have a positive ending balance, so we can roll over some funds. So although we have five hundred sixty thousand dollars, we made sure to budget every single dollar, but we're looking forward to still having something rolled over.
Sorry, I mean, it's just, looking at our chief business services officer, typically you want to try to project in some kind of net income in the budget instead of allocating every dollar towards an expenditure.
I think they've done that with the contingency. They have fifty six thousand dollars as their contingency, so that's kind of what they're doing there. But then they just show it as an expenditure, even though it's really not.
Okay. Yes, we always have the contingency available for every single fiscal year, but traditionally, it has not been tapped in at IVC. It wasn't tapped in this year, so it's rolling over for next year, and hopefully will be the same come another year for the next fiscal year presentation.
All right. Thank you for that. Any, any other questions? Great presentation. IVC student government is in good hands, John. So, and Diego, good luck in DC. I know I'll see you there when I go.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. My name is Christian Suazo. I am the ASG president-elect, and I am here with Patrick Muamba, our director of budget and finance. And we are here to present our associate student government fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tentative budget. So to begin with the budget highlights, we are projected to have eighty thousand in beginning balance due to the unused funds from our fiscal year of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Working with our Saddleback College Administration to pick up the costs associated with each school that ASG has historically funded to allow more flexibility in funding to larger campus-wide programs and resources. We are very grateful to our administration for working with us, President Stern, to allow more flexibility for us and to support larger programs, clubs, and more student travel. We are projected to have two hundred and eighty thousand in ASG activity fee sales due to a seventy percent increase in activity fee, which is Diego Victoria described in his presentation. We started looking at our budget and the cost of goods and services. We also started looking at the prospect of dwindling contract revenue services in the future. Eight years ago, we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contracted revenue, and now we are around eighty thousand. Compared to our fee to other schools in the area, we found that we are one of the lowest. For example, OCC is at twenty six, gotta continue with the OCC slam tonight. Is at twenty six dollars. The Riverside District is at thirty dollars. Fullerton is at fifteen dollars. Long Beach is at twenty dollars. I led a collaboration with our ASIV, with ASIVC president Diego Victoria to find a comprehensive number to our students and also to provide transparency to our students, such as showing our budget. We found that seventeen dollars is a good number where we would not need to come back anytime soon to increase if costs continue to increase. We include a referendum in our last election back in March to see if students would support an increase in the past last March. In terms of, or we, ASG receives forty point seventy-two percent of contracted services revenue, which is based on our bookstore contract. We are committed to continue to donate at least twenty percent of our revenues to scholarships, which includes our book scholarships, our foundation general funds, and our child development center. In terms of our contingency fund, we reflect approximately twenty-two percent of total expenditures, and we are beginning to have a new model that we are following, which is to have our beginning balance be our contingency and basing our budget on our anticipated revenue. So that concludes our budget highlights. I would like to turn to our director of budget and finance, Patrick Muamba, to discuss the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five ASG tentative budget.
Good evening, trustees. I'm Patrick Muamba, director of budget and finance for Saddleback ASG. And I'd like to go over our tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. So on the very left side column, you'll see our adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. In the middle, you'll see our actuals as of March eighth. And on the right, you will see our tentative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Going over to our beginning balance, we're expecting eighty thousand dollars rollover from this year. Our beginning balance will be adjusted based on our final actuals at the end of this year. Going to line item B, we're looking at eighty thousand dollars in bookstore revenue. That's steady from fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. On line item C, we're not expecting any revenue from dining and vending services. Again, that's because we don't have a cafeteria. On line item D, the activity fee sales, we put a referendum to increase our activity fee sales to seventeen dollars, and we're expecting an increase of revenue of about twenty percent from that. From interest and investment income, line item E, we're expecting six thousand five hundred. And our other revenue, we're expecting three thousand dollars, mainly from our movie ticket sales that we provide through the ASG stamp. For uses of our funds, we've allocated one hundred thirty thousand for campus life, six thousand seven hundred for co-curricular, two thousand for ASG operations, nine thousand three, I'm sorry, thirty-five thousand for ASG operations nondiscretionary. That's for the salaries for our student workers. Ninety-two thousand in student support, seventy-three thousand nine hundred in scholarships. That's twenty percent of our projected revenue. And eighty thousand dollars in contingency fund. Again, that's our rollover from this fiscal year. Moving on to our student representation fees, we're expecting a beginning balance of fifty thousand dollars from this year, and we're expecting a revenue of sixty-two thousand dollars from the fees. For our line items, on line item C, we're expecting to allocate sixty thousand dollars for travel. Most of that will be spent towards our travel to our DC conference. We also added a new item line, item line D. We learned at the SSC conference this December that we can use our student rep fees for other uses, so we allocated eighteen thousand eight hundred thirty dollars for that. The district admin fee seen on line E is a seven percent administrative fee charged by the district on the student rep fees. And then line item F is the one dollar share of the fee that the state receives.
Thank you very much, Patrick. I'd like to move on to our fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four highlights. We were, have the high privilege of taking eight student leaders to Washington DC to attend the ASAC conference with me, with our congressmen and senators. uh with me, with our uh congressmen and senators, uh mainly advocating for the uh rising for the Pell Grant, advocating for the Dream Act, most of us advocating for reauthorizing the Higher Education Act. Uh, we hosted a voter registration uh table and a Panini's and politics event featuring five Salabac College faculty on the panel led by um our director, or Director of External Affairs, Michael Fortovich. Um, we were able to assist the vets with toys for tots uh this uh during the holidays. And we are continuing to fund our very popular Octopus Pass program. Um, we are actually presenting a new contract that's sixty percent less than our current contract. Uh, we are at two thousand rides per month uh with over a hundred and fifteen more individuals. Uh, ridership is increasing. We are uh building club participation with fifty, uh more than fifty organizations this year, which is the most we've ever had on our campus with over a hundred and twenty uh events, uh travel and meeting the requests submitted so far for this academic year. We filled all ASG leadership positions for the first time since the pandemic, which is a major achievement for us. And we are restructuring ASG to include a spirit section, which is a loud crowd that's ongoing, and including DSPS in our organization. And with that, that is the end of our um fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five tentative budget. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you both for your excellent presentation. Any questions from trustees? Trustee Prendergast? Yeah, so if you can go back to page three or five on the budget. Just a curious question about the, on the bookstore revenue. So one more back. You have adopted from last year eighty thousand. Your actuals is two thousand eight hundred, but you're you have eighty thousand again. So is it the same clerical error that?
Yeah, so much like IVC, uh the money just hasn't been transferred to our account yet. These numbers are from back in March, uh more up-to-date figures. We're expecting closer to our eighty thousand.
Okay. Cause it's.
If I could add to that, it was Follett was the one that wasn't paying us timely. And so we were working with them, I would say consistently. Both the campuses were calling Follett and so they finally resolved the issue on Follett's end and will be cutting us the checks.
Okay. And then is, is there any projection to a decrease in the amount on either campus due to the push for uh free textbooks, free online textbooks? Is that gonna start affecting that budget?
As of right now, we're not expecting any decrease in our bookstore contract for our next fiscal year. Uh, we would have to revisit that for any future years.
All right. Any other questions? Trustee Melchiker?
Yeah, I thought it was excellent also. And um I think it's very good that you both have the same fee for students so that they're, they're not two different fees. It makes it more um, you know, much more cohesive. And I also think it's very good, all the activities that you support for the students, it's so important. And and as you're saying, the students are back now and they're participating a hundred percent. You've got a hundred percent of your uh student government positions filled, so uh congratulations. I'm doing a good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. So now we are on to eight point three, the approval of twenty twenty. I'm sorry. I skipped one. Eight point two, eight, eight point two, student housing presentation, IVC and Salabac College.
You need to action for eight point one.
I thought that was later. I thought this was, I thought we were gonna prove it later in the agenda. No? I thought, isn't it down in the agenda? No?
It's standalone, April.
Okay. All right. So um we need.
And approving their student representation fee, I think, also.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So I move.
We need a motion.
So move.
Motion, Trustee Melchiker?
Second.
Second, Trustee Dak. Let's go ahead and vote.
Point of order. Again, if we haven't voted to increase their fee yet, the budget is based on us voting for that fee. So.
Well, that's what I thought. I thought we were gonna vote later.
Not saying that we would vote no on the fee, but if we did, then we could not approve this budget.
Well, I thought, I guess I missed the, in the gen, I thought it was gonna be on the agenda later to, for the fee increase.
Right, it is.
Oh, so that's what I, that's why.
That's my point exactly.
If you approve the tentative budget and let's say you don't approve the fee increase, then they could revise their adopted budget. Cause this is just the tentative budget, so they can spend money on July first. They will have an adopted budget, so they could reflect that non-approval of the fee increase in their adopted budget that comes to you in August.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. It might have been better to put the fee increase first, but. Okay. Yep, we're voting on eight point one. All right. The tentative student budget at IVC and Salabac is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay. Now we're on to eight point two.
All right. I just want to say a few words. Oh, and I'm being reminded too, we might need to extend the time, so. Can we do three presentations in nineteen minutes?
No.
Think so.
Can you name that tune and tune? Do you want to do that first?
Name that tune, sure.
Extend the time.
Sure. Okay, um, I'll undertake a motion to extend the meeting.
I shall move.
To. Yeah. Why don't you do nine thirty?
Nine thirty.
Okay. I'm sorry? Uh, Trustee Edman moves to extend the meeting to nine thirty PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Trustee Dak, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Okay. Now.
All right. I was just gonna say some introductory remarks about uh this next uh presentation on student housing. I really appreciated the students really illuminating the importance of uh moving forward with this project and also some of our faculty spoke of this. But obviously, this is something that's been under discussion for a while with various presentations, including a special study session that we conducted for the board. And as you recall, um, the board really uh encouraged administration to revisit um our facilities master plan and the possible use of basic aid funds for student housing. So I'm, I'm gonna just give it away upfront and say that um the college presidents working in conjunction with the various constituent groups at each of the respective campuses did that, had robust conversations. And again, the beacon was always uh student needs in, in, in particular related to student housing. So I'm happy to report that the projects, the student housing projects have been prioritized um in the facilities master plan uh using basic aid dollars. And so tonight, you're gonna hear about what that looks like. So I think I'll turn it over to Anne Marie and uh you'll introduce uh our speakers.
All right. Thank you very much, Chancellor Barnes. So tonight, we have our Executive Director of Facilities Planning, um, Midhany Efrem and Anne Vols from the Vols Company, who will be uh doing the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Anne Marie, uh and thanks for having us here today to present. Uh, we have three categories. We're gonna be talking about the facility planning and the process we went through to get to this point. Uh, and as you stated, Chancellor Barnes, it's, it's been a long time coming, I think. Uh, so I'm glad we're here today. Uh, and there will, there will be a quick analysis summary and then a summary recommendation uh slide.
So for the participatory governance review, this is just giving the board a snapshot of the various committees that it went through. Um, so on both Irvine Valley College and Salabac College, it has gone through the various committees that culminated in the capital improvement committee as well as the district resource allocation committee that has then led to tonight's recommendation that is our next agenda item.
Thank you, Anne Marie. And so I think to, to echo again what Anne Marie uh just mentioned, the participatory governance review process, both at the college levels and uh district level. Um, I think uh all the committees went through it, vetted it out. Um, and the recommendation was to bring uh this, to do the student housing projects uh in the original program format as it was initially brought forth uh with three hundred and twenty beds and four hundred beds uh at Irvine Valley and Salabac College respectfully. And so I, I think that was a critical process that Anne Marie, that previous slide that we just showed, again, at the college levels with all the uh college-level committees and then bringing it forth to the district uh committees, uh and then now it's here today. Um, I, the, when we talk about the original programming, it's the, the single cohort uh of students that we talked about. We found that as we were meeting with the different committees and uh it was the, essentially the sweet spot for us to be able to uh include student housing to the, um, to our facilities master plan. Um, it was not too big, not too small. Um, any bigger, I think, would have affected uh the FMP in the long run. So the, the size, I think, that we selected, which is again, the original uh program that we've been sharing all along. Uh, we felt, the, all the committees felt it was the, the perfect way to start off student housing at both Irvine Valley College and Salabac College. Um, I think, wanna focus again, that original program and what it is. It's really the single student-focused hous- housing, uh not necessarily the, the student housing with families and children. It's uh, this cohort of students, managing this or building this program is efficient from a capital and operating perspective. Uh, it allows design for common areas to, to be focused solely and again, for one cohort of students versus uh a cohort of students that have families and children. From a design and cost standpoint, it adds more complexity and cost. Uh, hence why we really, I think, everyone from every level, we really focused on that original program, which was key to make this, making this successful and, and adding it to our FMP. So I will go to the next slide here. Uh, again, this is, you know, while we're excited to do this program, um, this is gonna be a first and new to us. I mean, we're gonna go, our college campuses closes at ten now, right? But this is a twenty-four hour community now that we're talking about. And so I think this will allow us to slowly uh inch to managing housing. Uh, and so it's, it will be helpful for us. Another point here is I think, um, you know, in the original uh program, we always had an intention uh for expansion if we ever wanted to expand in the future. So I think in the original program, you're gonna see that, um, while it's a single student cohort, we have in mind always to, in the future, if we wanted to expand, we can expand to uh other cohorts of students, right? It's important to note that um when you have another type of cohort students with families and children, you don't want to co-mingle or, or mix the two. They need to be two, essentially two buildings. You can't have the same functions together. So, you know, if there is ever to be a phase two, that's something we could look at and easily manage uh and do. So when we did the study session in uh last November, we did share this Gantt chart with you all. We just updated it to the project um based on all the uh committees and uh the, at the college level and the district level committees. The first uh set of uh projects that you see right now are all projects that are either in design, DSA-approved, uh under construction. So those are projects we really couldn't touch. And so those are set forth in our FMP. Um, and so there are a whole slew of projects, as you can see. And I think just as a quick reminder, the Gantt charts on the, on the right, the color schemes, anything blue is uh you're in bid, orange is construction and red is uh closeouts. And below, probably should have started with the green. Um, but uh the green would be um design, yellow would be DSA, blue again would be uh in bid uh and so forth. So that's kind of the, the meaning of that, uh, the colors. So the next set of projects, again, uh are projects that are critical to the colleges that uh wanted. The college again met uh at the college level and said, hey, we have to get these projects done before we can introduce student housing. These are critical projects. Uh, so uh as you can see, everything above IVC student housing, all those projects were critical to the colleges and those needed to get done uh before we could entertain uh student housing. Uh, but we were, again, able to incorporate student housing with that original program into our facilities master plan without really having a, a major uh impact uh to the facilities master plan. We also obviously included uh some of the state funding, state-funded projects that we still want to go after that we, those, those are in a specific timeline. We can't really touch those timelines. So those projects, the colleges also said, hey, we need to do those as well, obviously, because we don't want to lose state funding in the future if it becomes available. Um, in case you're wondering why the, the SS, Salabac College student housing is way at the bottom, there's domino effects, as we know, in construction that we have to follow. Um, the SSE renovation project needed to get done, needs to get done before we can even do the Salabac student housing only because the space, the location of where the student housing for Salabac is gonna go is gonna be used as swing space. It's a critical swing space uh that we have to use. Uh, so hence why it's, it's uh at the bottom there.
How, how do you know which ones got, have state funding?
So that's a good question. Thank you, Trustee Melchiker. So wherever you see FPP and IPP.
Oh, I see.
And so those are designations. So FPP stands for Final Project Proposal.
Yeah.
Uh, and IPP is an Initial Project Proposal. So that's a way to designate what's state-funded and not state-funded.
Thanks.
Good question. And then obviously, as we do uh with all of our FMP, you're gonna see this um uh in our uh cash flow. We have to manage our cash flow and this is one of the ways that we had to work, again, with all the committees to see how are we gonna, you know, fit in the, the uh student housing? So we, we had to move some projects to the left, to the right, or just move some budgets to make things work without really uh drastically affecting uh our FMP. So we may, we were able to make that work. Um, again, with the original program, but anything more would have drastically affected our, our FMP to where we would have to either push projects way forward or possibly even cancel some. So, but we didn't get to that point, thankfully. And uh ba- basically, this shows when student housing is gonna begin planning at IVC in twenty seven, twenty eight and then Salabac student housing in thirty, thirty-one. And then uh Anne's gonna give us a quick summary.
So really following up on the board working session that we had in November and um over the past five months, we've run several um updated models to show different updated programs, bringing in students with families, increasing the original program. Of course, just bear in mind, it's at IVC three hundred and twenty beds as the original and four hundred at um Salabac. So we tested all these different options and as Midhany said too, of course, yes, you get better income, you impact on the income, but look at the construction cost and how much a course it increases as we expand the building footprint. So these numbers were used in a lot of the discussions that you've heard about and uh were certainly informative to what, everything that Midhany just shared.
So a quick summary and recommendation. So we put together a quick pros and cons, I think, to compare uh the two. Again, the single student original program is what you've, I think, what we've been seeing, the three hundred and twenty, four hundred beds, uh both at IVC and Salabac respectively. Um, with that setup, if you will, less impact on the total cost of ownership, cost, you know, not as impactful, smaller footprint, uh supports the FMP, as I have already mentioned, uh and focused residential uh programming. And so it makes it much doable, if you will. The con, obviously, we won't, aren't able to meet the students with, with the needs of, with students with families or multi-generational households. And the other uh is the single student original program with families. Uh, the pro, obviously, we would meet the greater campus population served. Uh, the con, uh as we went through the, the exercise was that it would negatively impact uh by delaying, uh the FMP, by delaying, delaying several projects to accommodate budget needs. So that, that's a big impact. Resident, residential placement, as I mentioned earlier, the focus on the demographics. Again, you can't put them in one building. They would have to be multiple buildings, which would add costs as well. Um, additional FTEs of, that we would need, FTE, excuse me, uh that we would need to support the program. Uh, and then uh it, this would require additional support spaces, different types of support spaces for families with children. Uh, and then just obviously, the bigger the program, um, the increased liability, uh, yeah, liability, excuse me. So the, the, I can't stress enough that the participatory governance at all levels, how I think well that went um at, again, at the college levels, uh bringing it to the, the KIC and, and draft committees at the district level. Um, it was uh critical. I, I think all the recommendation throughout the process was to move forward with the original housing, student housing programs as presented and approved, uh with all the participatory governance groups. And then I think more importantly, incorporate all the projects, the two housing projects to the facilities master plan. So you'll know, you'll notice, excuse me, that. So you'll notice, excuse me, that in the agenda item 8.3, it's our annual update that we do for the board. We've included the two projects within that plan. Again, we talked about the different committees that have been involved, critical of both at the college level and district level, were critical in the process. Just real quick, we quickly mentioned the IVC planning for IVC's project, where it's around 2027, 2028, with opening at 2031, 32. Saddleback housing begins planning 2030, 31. Again, as we mentioned earlier, the SSE project has to get done in order for this project to commence because of where the project will be. Again, we moved some projects around to essentially make this work and make the student housing available within the FMP. We mentioned the state funding projects, this assumes that we would be receiving state funds. And, yeah, that is it.
All right. Thank you both for that presentation. I'll now open it up for trustee questions. Trustee Milchker.
Where do you envision these housing projects to be on both campuses?
Sure. So at the Saddleback College, the Village area is where it's slated to be. So it's kind of been our go-to swing space for a lot of our projects, and so it's been kind of critical. So hence the domino effect for the Saddleback housing project. And at IVC, right south of the New Arts Village, the Dirt Lot is what we're thinking. And again, in both locations, with still having space for future expansions.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Trustee Dak.
So, and I may have misheard, you're on my deaf side. Was the only consideration when it came to adding more beds, cost and space utilization, or were there other factors that came up? Because I'm looking back at my notes from our study session, and I was a little concerned that 320 beds, for how cost of living is increasing so dramatically, I feel like this, it's going to be like, there's going to be more students that want it than there's availability pretty much like when it opens. At least that's my concern.
Right. So cost was essentially a big factor, Trustee Dak, in trying to factor in, how do we bring in the two housing projects without adversely affecting our FMP? So cost was a big deal, but I think we, again, going back to making sure that the original program, where it's designed, how it's designed, that you're factoring in the future and kind of making space for that, and that you're prepared for the future. But cost was a big deal.
But I think also was, you know, the fact that we've never done student housing. It's going to be, you know, a new, a lot of new things that are going to have to be learned, you know, tried and true on how you do it. Midhany mentioned that we would now be a 24/7 campus, and we would have to have, you know, police and maintenance, you know, every, all of the support services would need to be here 24/7. So, you know, if a toilet bursts at 2:00 a.m., we have to have a facilities guy that can come and, you know, turn the water off and fix that. You know, a lot of Title IX issues that are popping up. And then really talking with other colleges that are just now venturing into it, you know, they're all saying, start small. You know, I wouldn't say that we're super small, I would say we're kind of medium on where some of the other colleges are. But it gives us the opportunity to really learn it and learn and improve what we're doing. So if we want to expand at a later date, we'll be able to do that.
Thank you. I do have one more question. I do remember also discussion about the actual rental rates, and there's discussion on dynamic rent roll, and I just wasn't sure, was this part of the sort of analysis, or is this more just like construction than, you know, actual funding or services will be handled at a different time?
So going with the smaller program too, even maybe another pro, is we did keep it all focused on the affordable rates. So we did not do the dynamic rent roll, because we really focused in on those low-income students. So similar to the original SB 169 grant.
I think at this time, though, it's really too early to establish what the rates are going to be. You know, once we get into planning and we know what it's going to be, I think at that point in time, we'll be in a better position to, you know, see what the rents are, the market rates. We can survey the students again to see how many we have an interest for, you know, how many are economically disadvantaged, and, you know, where we need to be on our rents. So when we get farther down the line, and like 2728 with IVC, we'll be able to establish the rent rates at that time.
So I know, Trustee Prendergast, but just while we're on that topic, so, since it seems to be an OCC-themed evening, OCC or Co-host has market rate housing, correct?
They do.
Yes.
It's all market rate. It's not affordable housing, it's not subsidized, it's fully market rate. So what we're saying tonight is that we're moving forward with a plan where we have not yet decided how we're going to handle rents.
If we go with our original plan, the original plan had that we were going to have the extremely below-market rates. So we'd had the tiered, the tiered different rates. We can still do that. What I'm saying is, before we make that final determination, I think we would want to look at where we are in 2728 before we establish that. You know, we don't have an action item on the student housing this item. The action item comes on our next item with the facilities master plan, where we're asking you to say, yes, let's move forward using basic aid funds to build student housing, without discussing what the rent's going to be or anything like that.
Okay. Trustee Prendergast.
Well, and just to tail on that, I would argue that we wouldn't be able to really set what we're going to do with rents until it's done in 2030.
Yeah.
Right? 2027 would still be way too early. But anyway. And you mentioned something that triggered something else with me thinking. So you're talking about, you know, this being new, we've never done it. And then Trustee Jamal kind of alluded to this. I would say ordinarily, we could probably talk to OCC and ask them some of what they learned, but after tonight, they may not want to share it. But, and it kind of goes to the second point you were making about the rents and charging, having, seeing what's going on in student housing and institutions, like where I attended, UC Santa Barbara, where, you know, they started off as single beds, then two beds, then now three beds in a room, and now four beds in a room. Is that something we foresee that could be down the line, or are we just going to stick, it's going to be one or two per room?
So, and Anne, you can jump in here, but the way we had done it, the original plan is we had very few studios. We did have some, what we call singles, but that was really two beds in a room, and then we had some doubles that were four beds in a room. So we had kind of planned the mix in the original program. I think that's kind of what we would probably stick to when we do the planning. But again, that's something that can be, you know, flushed out better when we get into actually planning and designing.
That would be a big part of the calculation of cost, is, you know, typically, when you're looking at rents in areas, you're looking at what's the average per-room cost. And then if you're putting two people in that, you're dividing that in half, if you're putting four, obviously. So, yeah, I think, like you said, you'll be talking about that in 2030. I don't know if I'll be around. But, yeah, that's, it's good to hear that we're already thinking that far ahead and have that mindset in advance.
On your placements, depending on your students that year, and depending, you can do, as long as the room is designed to be a double or a single, if we have a lot of students one year with the neat accommodations, we can have more singles. So that can fluctuate a bit, too.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Another round?
That's good to hear. When I started at Ohio State, there, it was a sixplex, there were six girls in a room. It was overcrowded year, so, but it was fun, so it was okay. But I was just wondering if, if any of the schools, because it sounds like we're going to be managing it ourselves, so we probably have to hire people that know what they're doing and this kind of thing. I mean, I know you know what you're doing, but, but do any of the schools hire property managers or have it subcontracted out? I'm just asking to, you know.
Sure, that's a great question. There's several schools, maybe about 13 really in rural areas, that have had student housing for a long time, and they all manage it themselves. Orange Coast College, of course, opened in 2020. Santa Rosa Junior College opened last fall, and Napa Valley will open this fall. They all are using third-party management services. So it's a mix.
But I would say, we've already had discussions with CSEA, and their desire is that we not contract it out. So our plan, yeah, and POA both, our plan is that we would manage it ourselves, and we would have to add staffing. So that was, you know, in the original plan, when we did it, that was part of the costs that we built in, was the staffing that we had to add. You know, it's over, you know, 21 staff, full-time equivalent staff, that we need to add just for our original program, you know, and that's at Saddleback alone. IVC's was a little bit less, how much, theirs was a little bit lower, about 17.
You need people to rent it, you need people, managers, you need maintenance people, you need people in the middle of the night if a pipe breaks, you need police there if there's any problem. It's a lot of people that you need, so you know that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Resident advisors.
Okay, resident advisors, right. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Trustee, I'm in.
This is kind of minor, but at the bottom of page five, I think I know what this means, but I'd just like clarification, doesn't combine student groups who may not necessarily want to live in close proximity to each other. It just kind of red-flagged it, because I know that, I suspect that you meant families versus singles, but could it be, it seems like it could be read other way.
I understand.
No, that's what I was referring to, having singles versus families.
All right. I'd say two things. You addressed one of them. Construction costs today are not what they're necessarily going to be when we break ground. And if we look at the trend in construction costs, I work with a number of GCs in my line of work. We just did a seminar actually on construction costs, and if they keep going in the direction to do this, it's going to have to be modified. Costs are going to increase substantially.
And if I can just add to that, Trustee Jamal, I think we would treat this like all of our capital outlay project, and assess it, and look at it, and meet with all the committees, and go over it, and look at the budget every year, right? And come back to you all.
Yeah. And the second thing I was thinking about, I looked to the college presidents, is the, you know, the movement, the continued, continuous movement towards possible more online education. How do we see that impacting student housing on campus? Because that's what we're talking about.
So first, we're starting to see some reversal of where that has been. At its natus, we were maybe 50/50. We're starting to see some return of students to campus. It feels like we're going to land somewhere around 60/40 on-ground, online. Pre-pandemic Saddleback was 70/30, with one of the highest online student populations. So first, I don't know that it's going to continue on its current trajectory, it feels like it's actually reversing. Second, even online students who are living in our community but taking classes online for convenience, or to save transportation costs, are struggling with rents and the same issues. And indeed, the homelessness situation is equally bad for those who are online. One might argue that it's worse because those online students are often working and unable to come to class, so that might actually be a population that is in more need of housing. So President Jamal, I'm not sure, you know, obviously, we have lots of years to look at the trend. But if I sit here today, I don't see the online versus on-ground trend affecting the need for housing, particularly the numbers we're talking about.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear you say the 60/40 number. I just received a call today from a constituent who was very unhappy, and whose child was trying to register for classes at Saddleback, and she was complaining to me that 90% of them were online, and they wanted something in person. So we'll talk about that later. I said I didn't think that was the case, and that I thought it was more along the lines of 60/40. And I hadn't talked to you before this, that's just how I felt, or I sensed. But anyway, Trustee, I mean, President Hernandez.
Ditto. I don't want to repeat what was already stated. The focus, though, for us has been affordable housing. I do not believe whatever the ratio ends up being in 2031, 32, that that's going to shift and change. And so I do believe that whether students are in person, online, or a mix, a hybrid mix, that the need for affordable housing is still going to be a big draw for students. And I do believe there would be demand.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all, thank you both for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, well, okay.
If anything, going back to that, if anything, it would require that we make sure we have really good Wi-Fi services in the buildings for the online students.
Absolutely.
Good point. All right. Now we're on to the master plan, the changes, the way this read is, so changes to the 2020 facility master plan.
All right, great. First, thanks for extending the meeting, because I would have to go super fast, obviously.
You can still go super fast.
There's still another one.
You're cut off the hook.
We need to extend.
Okay, I'll try to go as quickly as I can. So again, thank you for having me here today. We always look forward to provide the board updates on all of our projects, some were mentioned earlier in your updates. So we look forward to giving you all updates. So we'll be talking about completed projects, projects under construction, in-design planning, and upcoming projects in the future. So completed projects, the first one we have is the Landscape Project Phase One. Trustee Jamal, you mentioned Sean Revel earlier. He played an instrumental role in really making this project successful, him, Aaron, and Mary. So the incentive that we're going to receive or receive, wouldn't have, we wouldn't have gotten it honestly without his full support, so kudos to him. So Landscape Project Phase One, completed last fall 2023, and cleaned up essentially really all the entrances of the campus, parking lot 13, and addressed the main entrance of the campus with a new ADA accessible access from the bus stop. The other project, obviously, is the Gateway Project, which is a one-stop shop for our students. That project was completed fall of 2023. We mentioned earlier the Arts Village Project at IVC, that project was complete fall of 2023. Again, I think you can say one-stop shop for fine arts, where they were in multiple locations throughout the campus, and now they're in their complex. ATEP demolition, we had a few Navy buildings, a few structures still left, and we finally demoed, so really, all the Navy structures are down now. So that project is complete fall as well. And we did submit the county for, an invoice for $281,000, which is part of the deal, if you will. Any buildings that were to be demoed in the County Exchange parcel, we were to get reimbursed half the cost of that. So hopefully, we'll be receiving that check soon. So next, projects under construction, we have at Saddleback, the softball field and parking lot 12 expansion, really looking forward to getting this project through. This will integrate the campus topography, it's really hilly right now where it's at, it was hard to get to. The new setup will be really nice, ADA accessible, it'll have a new parking lot with approximately 144 stalls, with new EV charging stations, so excited to get this done. So the notice proceed was issued in last summer, 49% complete, and we're hoping to complete fall of 2024. The Solar Canopy Project Phase One, this project, if you've seen it in Lot 5A, it looks like it's done, but it's not quite done. But the canopies have been installed. This Phase One will meet about 25% of the campus needs. We are just essentially waiting for the electrical gear, that's just in high demand and hard to get to these days, unfortunately. It takes anywhere between 50 to 80 weeks for those parts to come in. So we're just waiting for that, and we're expecting that sometime in the fall to get here, and we'll be complete with the project in the fall. Saddleback at ATEP project, this project is going well. Again, will house the culinary arts, hospitality, advanced transportation, logistics, 35% complete, and we're looking to complete spring of 2025. The math computer science, the old building's been demoed, and new building is moving up fast. So we're very excited about this building. So we're very excited about this building will house the computer science department, math departments, and the new broadcast room for distance education. So we're looking forward to that, and we did demo the old bridge that used to connect right to it, and we're going to be building a new bridge as part of that project. This is a state-funded project as well. We just completed two state-funded projects, so this is the third state-funded project we had on our FMP. It's twenty-five percent complete with construction completion spring of 2026. Projects we have in design planning and projects, so the long-awaited, the electrical vehicle, electric vehicle charging stations, this is a, in collaboration with Southern California Edison, where SCE is paying for all the infrastructure work, over a million dollars to do this work. So DSA just approved the work, and so we're looking to, they're looking to start approximately, that first bullet point in the timeline is incorrect, I'm sorry. The construction to start summer of 2024 and complete in fall of 2024. So we purchased the equipment, that was part of the requirement, but there's potentially an incentive that we're going to look at, possibly get an incentive for that as well. The quad renovation project, so this will address, this is at Saddleback, all the new ADA compliance issues that we have in the quad. Obviously, renovating all the landscape and irrigation systems to meet sustainable goals will address lighting. Lighting at night is not the best right now here in the quad. And develop outdoor collaborative spaces. So I think the quad here at Saddleback is used so much for so many events that this will only make it that much better. DSA approved it, this is out to bid, and so we're going to be starting this project summer of 2024. It'll be somewhat impactful to the college. Obviously, it's right in the middle of all the buildings, but we're working with the college and all the constituents to just make sure it's phased correctly and that all the buildings will be accessible during construction. And construction completion is spring of 2025. So this is a long project name, IVC Fine Arts Promenade, Hardscape Coffee Shop and Performing Arts Yard Renovation. The reason for the long name is this is an amalgamation of a bunch of projects put together. We're excited about this. We've been waiting for the Arts Village Project to complete. This will have a coffee structure along with outdoor areas for our students. This will be a great addition for IVC for that side of campus. And so we're looking to, submitted to DSA already, looking for approval from DSA summer of 2024. Construction beginning fall of '24 and completing summer of '25. Saddleback Baseball Field and Scoreboard Replacement. This is, we're going to be replacing the grass baseball field with new field turf, replacing the old antiquated scoreboard, and replacing fencing within, and addressing the retaining wall and landscaping to address slope issues by the third base side. It's not, it's not doing too well right now, and then installing new netting on the third base side. So we're hoping to finish completion, design completion fall of '24. DSA approval early summer, excuse me, early spring of '25, beginning construction summer '25, and complete construction fall of '25. Utility Distribution and 12KV Projects. I mean, the 12KV Project, it's, it's kind of one of those, what you don't see in the background, but work is needed on it. The infrastructure here at Saddleback is in great need of work, if you will. So it's going to be addressing a lot of all, the transformer, all, some of the switches that we have. Switches are, we need to add more switches on the campus instead, so when we do a lot of the campus shutdowns, we don't have to shut down the whole campus, we can do it per area. Current, it's currently in design, hopefully, hoping to complete it end of this semester. Construction start fall of '24 and spring of '26 completion. IVC Parking Lot Temp to Permanent, that's another project. It's adjacent to where the new housing is going to be by the athletics side, so we're changing that gravel lot to a more permanent lot. New lighting, new park, parking stalls, approximately one-hundred-and-ten, adding charging stations, about six, and then connecting a walkway from that backside all the way into the, to the campus. Right now, folks are walking on the street, so this will make it safer for our students. Design completion summer of '24, DSA approval fall of '24, and just to go down, completion hopefully it's spring of '26, early spring of '26. IVC Student Services Student Union, this project has been DSA approved. We are just waiting for the time for construction to commence. So we're looking at starting the bid process in the fall, and construction starting spring of '25. So we're very excited about this. Again, we're going to be replacing the Student Services Building and B-100, and the new quad at IVC. This will essentially transform the front-facing part of the campus with a new drop-off. So we're very excited about this project. We're looking to start again construction spring of '25 and complete spring of 2027. Central Plant Project, this current central plant, it's, I mean, I think it was, it's been there for a long time. The equipment that's there right now are, are one of the original equipment that's there. With all the new buildings that we're adding, all the new infrastructure that we're adding, the central plant cooling systems and heating systems needed to be upgraded, so they're in great need of that. We're also decommissioning our cogen systems, which is our big gas hog, so we're getting rid of that and putting more new energy-efficient systems. So we're looking to get DSA final approval hopefully spring of '25, commence construction summer of '25, and then spring '27 complete construction. Saddleback Student Services renovations, as you all know, the Gateway Building opened. Most of the folks that were in Student Services, the SSE moved to the Gateway, which allowed some free space, and we have some interim use that we're using that space. We're working with the college on how that space is going to be used. But we're also working on the permanent renovation of that building as well, which will, we're going to be starting that soon, and we're going to be moving folks from the AGB into SSE, moving cafeteria to the first, consolidate health services on the first floor, which is critical. So the interim occupancy, we're, we're doing that right now, but the commencement of the renovation, the big renovation is spring of '25, construction completion fall of 2030. Again, this project will, once this is done, we will be able to get started with the housing project at Saddleback. Upcoming projects, we are currently out for RFQP for Design Services for the Landscape Improvement Phase Two. Hopefully, we'll get another incentive again. We're going to go after that if we can. But we're also doing a solar canopy project phase two, so we, we are almost done with phase one. But we're gonna, what we did here is start the design, we want to start design with phase two and construction, but also plan design for phase three and four. So the construction currently for phase three and four is down the line, but if the college wants to do the projects upfront and do them upfront, they'll have the opportunity to do that. And I think just to, to add to this one, each solar phase has parking, not parking, vehicle charging stations, and I know trustee Jamal, you had mentioned about level-three charging stations. So we are looking at that as part of the 12KV and these projects to make sure that our infrastructure can meet those needs. Obviously, we're not going to have them everywhere because of the heavy load it takes, so we're, we're studying to see where we can strategically place these potentially level-three charging stations. And then future, again, programming, future projects, the greenhouse, biohorticulture, that's a program. We're going to start programming on that soon. And then the villages demo phase one and phase two, which is, will be incorporated as part of the student housing project for Saddleback. All right.
All right, questions? Okay, for first order of business is, we need a motion to extend the meeting?
I tried.
All right, so I'm going to move that we extend the meeting to 10:00 PM.
Okay, second.
Second, trustee Rydell, let's vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and student trustee yes vote. Trustee Melchiker.
It's all very exciting, all that's going on. You're very busy. What is logistics that's going to be in the new Saddleback College ATEP building? I, I hadn't heard of that. I know about ATEP, I know about the other things that are going to be in that.
Logistics is simply an offshoot of transportation, so autotech is really part of an overall transportation program, and we do offer classes in supply chain through the business area and in logistics as well.
Okay, so it's kind of extending with the autotech area and, you know, all the different phases of that, all the different manifestations of that, so, okay.
Comprehensive transportation.
So, so it's combining business with autotech and, and all the autonomous cars and all the other.
Correct, not a new program at all.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
So on the list that you have, I, I noticed the SSC renovation budget was one-hundred-and-thirty-six million. Now it's one-hundred-and-ten, it's a twenty-six million dollar drop. We never see that. Why, why is that happening? I'm not upset about it, I'm just curious what, what.
Yeah, Emery, I can take that. So our original FMP had that original budget in there, and we actually did an assessment on the project. We brought in our architect and did kind of high-level programming. Do we demo? Do we do renovations? And they actually priced it out, and so that's essentially where it, it kind of came down. And then the initial project also had a parking structure, where the parking structure need, at least on that side of the campus, just wasn't there anymore. We still have in our FMP a parking structure in lot ten down the line if we want to do it. Having two today just didn't make sense, so we actually vetted it out and, and budgeted.
But then I see you quickly tacked it onto the central plant, so you didn't really save anything. Thanks. Yeah, I just had the converse question, that there were a couple items overrun. And change orders, anything to be concerned about?
No, I, I think specifically if we're talking about the central plant, yeah. I mean, the central plant, the initial, we had an initial budget and look, but it's just, again, we go back as we get closer to these projects, every year we will do that. We'll relook at our numbers, and just the numbers just drastically changed from the original, unfortunately. And that's, we have to kind of double-check our numbers, so.
Well, and on the central plant too, I think, you know, a lot of programming has been done to look at everything. So that eighteen million was, I would say, an educated estimate at the time when the FMP was done. But now that we've gotten into it, and we want to decommission the cogeneration plant and electrify the central plant, which we hadn't done before, you know, that adds a lot of cost. You know, also renovating that building, the entire building and bringing it up to code was a lot more expensive than what we had originally anticipated. So that's really kind of where the cost, I don't know that it's an overrun because we haven't actually started it yet, but it is more than what we had originally planned. But I think this is a better estimate of where things are at this point in time.
Emery, if I can add to that, you're absolutely right. There's the DSA factor, where I think in our initial numbers, we didn't expect the amount of requirements DSA was going to come back and make us do. So they're treating this as a full renovation with ADA to do, so that certainly added to the cost as well.
Okay, you rolled through a lot. Thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we, I don't think we, I think we do need a motion.
Second.
Motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Dack, and this is on eight point three. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to eight point four, basic aid allocation recommendation for 2024, '25. And who, are you kicking this off, Emery?
Yes, I will kick this off. So I have myself, and then we have Connie Kavanaugh, who is our executive director of fiscal services here. Sorry, I have my sidekick here making me laugh.
Oh, good.
Could have done it in six minutes. I'm just saying, I'm just kidding. If only it were the last item on the agenda, go ahead.
All right. Connie, if you'll advance the slides for me when we start. So what we want to do is kind of give a little bit of a background just to remind the board on how the resource allocation process works before we delve right into the numbers. So that's the, the piece that I'm going to give the update on. So if we just slip right through Connie, the next slide, there we go. So here is our budget model, and I think the important thing to understand about our budget model is that it's a revenue model, it's not an expenditure model. So what we do is we look at all the income that's coming into the district for the unrestricted general fund. So remember, we have, the unrestricted general fund is kind of our operating fund. We also have restricted funds, which is our EOPS funding, our DSPS money. That's all the money that's coming in for grants and categoricals that aren't really for operations, they're for specific purposes. So we look at the unrestricted general fund as our operating fund. The types of income that are coming into the district, you can see there on the pictorial. We have property taxes and enrollment fees. Those are the two main sources that feed into the model that kind of floats into basic aid and into our DRAC model. And then we have all of our other state income that is not categorical, such as our part-time faculty funding that comes in, EPA, education protection account funding, as well as some lottery funding, and then we have our local sources that come in. Non-resident fees is one of the biggest ones. We have our apartment complex. Our ATEP revenue will be in there as well. So once we calculate all of the revenues, in order to capture the basic aid funds, we're looking at the property taxes that are coming in, plus the enrollment fees that are coming in from the students. And from that estimate, we back out how much the student-centered funding formula would generate for the districts, and that's kind of where we come up with how much we have available for basic aid versus how much we have available for the DRAC model. And then you can see there, within the DRAC model, it's split between the five, four different entities, the two colleges, district services, and then we have the general district-wide. And then the basic aid proceeds are split between our long-term commitments, our capital outlay projects, as well as our technology projects. Next slide, please. So here is kind of numbers, and I will say, these numbers are for illustrative purposes only. They have not been finalized for our tentative budget, but these are the numbers that we're working with right now, waiting on the May revise. So the total revenues that we're estimating to come into the unrestricted general fund for 24, 25 is about three-hundred-and-eighty-three million. We have our one-time adjustments and our ending balances, that's about twenty-four-point-two million. And then our prior-year contingencies and unallocated funds go back into the model of about nineteen-point-four million. So what that means is, if, whatever we budget, if we receive more revenue than we budget, then we're going to add it into the model next year and budget it in the next year. So we don't keep it and not allocate it, it's just a year delayed. So all, all the money goes back into the model the next year, and then it's redistributed out again. So total of four-hundred-and-twenty-six-point-seven million in revenues that we're working with at this point in time. Basic aid, so that's what's on the agenda for tonight, is one-hundred-and-eleven-point-five million. Basic aid, like I said, is then broken out between our long-term obligations. So we have about twenty-three-point-three million dollars in long-term obligations. And then between the KIC and the DTC projects, we have eighty-eight-point-three million dollars that we are proposing to allocate. We have a small amount for STIRS on behalf, seven-and-a-half million. What this is, is the state pays a piece of the STIRS on behalf of the districts. We have to report that as both revenue and expenditures. It has no impact on our bottom line because we budget the revenue and the expense as the same amount. And then we have the DRAC model, so this is the, the funding, this is the true operating budgets for the colleges and district services. It's about three-hundred-and-seven million dollars. You can see there at the bottom, the DRAC model, kind of the components that make that up. We have our SCFF, so that's our student-centered funding formula, our non-resident tuition, our state revenues that I mentioned, our local revenues, and then we have site-specific revenue that doesn't flow through the model. It's just the, the funding that the colleges collect on their own, and then we have our one-time funds. Next slide, please. I think the other aspect of our budget that is a little bit unique from other areas is we have some operating expenses, several operating expenses, that are covered by the basic aid allocations. So this is to show, you know, forty-three-point-eight million dollars that we are paying with basic aid would really be operating expenses that every other district in the state is having to pay with their operating budget, but we're paying all of this with our basic aid dollars. So it's not, it is, you know, I would say the benefit is going to the colleges for paying this with basic aid, but they're not having to pay it out of their operating budget, which the majority of the funds coming through, that is SCFF. So that's. So that's, you know, one of the benefits there. And then the next slide is our reserve policy. So just to remind the board, as we are building both the DRAC model and the basic aid model, we have a board policy, Board Policy 6200, as well as the board guidelines that you guys passed back in January, indicates that we're going to have budget a reserve that's equal to about two months of our operating expenditures. And that is the amount that's recommended by both the California Community College Chancellor's Office as well as the Government Finance Officers Association. So the way we get to that two months, which is about 16.7%, is we use, on the DRAC model, seven and a half percent of the projected unrestricted revenue. And then it's 20% of our property taxes on the basic aid side. And then three and a half percent from Saddleback, IVC, and District Services, their budget. So it's kind of the combination of those three is what we add up to make sure we meet that 16.7% or about two months of our operating expenditures. So with that, I'll turn it over to Connie, and she'll kind of go through the basic aid allocation, what the numbers are and where they came from.
Thanks, Anne Marie. Well, you did a lot of my work for me in explaining the process. So just as a reminder, this recommendation that's coming forward to you tonight is, has been approved by our DRAC group, which is our District Resource Allocation Council. And that group has fed the information for the allocations for both capital projects as well as technology through their respective committees. So we have the Capital Improvement Committee and the District-Wide Technology Committee. So DRAC has met throughout the spring and reviewed the recommendations that came through both the KIC and DTC committees, and has made this final recommendation that we're bringing forward to you tonight for approval. It's, there was much discussion had amongst the committees, so we just want you to know there was mindful discussion that happened. Unfortunately, when we looked at both our technology and our facility master plans and the needs of the funding required to meet the current year demands, our funds available to us through basic aid were not sufficient. So there was a lot of work done by both groups to reprioritize the requests that they had to make sure that we were living within our allocation available to us. And just as a reminder, this has been brought forward. It's part of our board agenda item, but the chancellor is recommending this approval in addition to the DRAC committee. Okay, so where do, where do we get the numbers, as Anne Marie says? So our estimated balance at July 1, 2024, is comprised of both that contingency figure Anne Marie talked about, which would be our prior-year contingency. So we add that back into the pot for redistribution, as she mentioned. And then we build in this year's contingency. So that's backed out here on the third line down. The other piece of that $42 million is prior-year funds that were unallocated. So again, as Anne Marie mentioned, we give back to the pot any funds that are available, whether it be from excess revenues collected and excess of what we budgeted. We also revert funds on projects that have been completed, and there are remaining funds. So for this year of that prior-year funds, that's about $25.6 million. 13 million of that comes from prior basic aid projects that have been closed, and we were able to revert back to the basic aid pool. And then the rest is comprised primarily of property taxes in excess of what we had anticipated. The basic aid receipts estimated for 24-25, the 86.4 million, that is comprised of the property tax collections as well as the student enrollment fees that Anne Marie mentioned in our previous slides. And then we reduce that. We back out the SCFF, the Student Centered Funding Formula, projections that are allocated through the DRAC model. So let's back out this year's contingency. The total funds available for this year, as she represented on the prior slides, is the $111.5 million. So the first thing we do is look to fund our long-term obligations and fixed expenses. So these are detailed here on this slide. We, the good news is, as of December 31, when we conducted our actuarial study on our pension liability trust, we actually had an asset. So we had more funds available in the trust than were required through the actuarial estimate. So we always fund the normal cost, which is the 7.7 million. But because we had that excess net asset in the trust, we were able to reduce the amount we have to contribute for next year by that 765,000. We always fund legislative advocacy, the trustee election costs, and the years in which we have elections. And then credit card and bank fees. And we have, I guess unfortunately, had to increase how much we are funding for our pension rate stabilization trust. And those are the funds we set aside in a trust to cover the cost of the increase in our purse and STIRS contributions since 2015-16. So we are transferring over 15 million to that trust to kind of keep up with our future increases in those costs. So the total cost of the long-term obligations and fixed expenses is 23.3 million. And then the rest is available for both capital and technology projects. So the KIC portion for the capital projects, their requests are broken down into these major categories. I'm not going to read them all to you. The total ask to meet the facility master plan schedule after the reductions, as I mentioned earlier, due to insufficient funds to cover the full cost of the master plan request, is 70.6 million. On the DTC requests, these are the technology requests to fund some of the technology strategic master plan, is 17.6 million. The lion's share of that is to fund the ERP systems and maintenance district-wide. And that currently covers both the implementation of Banner as well as our existing legacy systems in place until we fully migrate to Banner. So again, this just summarizes those three different categories that we've used to fund the basic aid allocation that goes back to the 111.5 million that we have available to us. And that is the recommendation from DRAC on how to fund the basic aid allocation. Oh, did you have a question? No, no. Okay. And then just the last piece, we always like to look to the future to see where we're trending. And so this shows the next three years. Again, it's very early, so these are rough estimates based on what we know today. So we have taken our proposed property tax increases, and we have applied a 4% annual increase to the secured property taxes that we project for the future. And we have not increased our enrollment fee revenue. This is just assuming we have a flat, you know, growth, or no growth, I guess, on the enrollment fees. Now, should we continue to see an increase in student enrollment, we would adjust that in the future. We have added in for the DRAC allocation, we've adjusted the SCFF by the COLA that's proposed by School Services of California for each of the next three years. And so if, once we back out, we do those total revenue projections, we back out the SCFF portion from the DRAC allocation. The third line there shows the net available funds that we would have. We've projected out our long-term obligations, again, that we covered on the prior slide, which leaves us with the amount available for basic aid allocations. And then we look again to our facility master plan and our district technology strategic master plan to see what their cash flow requirements are to fully fulfill those plans. There is a side note there on the technology strategic master plan. We are in the process of updating that plan. So these are estimates until we have an actual final approved plan for the future. But as you can see at the bottom line there, the amount remaining indicates that we will have to make adjustments. Should all these projections come true, we would have to make adjustments, again, like we did this year, to identify and prioritize what we would be able to fund out of the remaining basic aid funds.
Does that conclude?
That's it.
All right. Thank you for that.
Unless there's questions.
Trustees, any questions? All right, well.
It's late.
It's late. Anne Marie gave a long introduction and covered some of the territory. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion for approval. Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Let's vote on the item. All right, the item carries on a, oops, sorry, on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to our consent calendar. Do we have any pulls? No? All right. Motion trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to business services, and here we are. We've got 10.1, IVC, and Saddleback. Oh, sorry. Yep, no, I'm at the right end. IVC and Saddleback College Activity Fee Increase for 24-25. Motion trustee Milchiker. Second from trustee Hitty. I think we've asked the questions about this already, so let's go ahead and vote on the item. She can't do a second? Not on this one?
Oh.
Because it's a.
That's sad.
Okay, so let's do a revised motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second from trustee Dack. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to 10.2, HVAC Replacement and Rear Roof. The Library Project at IVC and the Award of a Bid, SSK Construction.
So move.
Motion from trustee Dack.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Okay, let's vote on the item. The motion carries on a 6-0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 10.3, IVC Fine Arts Building Project, Change Order Number 9, Notice of Completion.
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Motion carries, the item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.4, the Award of Architectural Services Agreement for Campus Landscape Improvements at Saddleback College.
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchiker.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. I was happy to see this was a highly competitive bid, one. And two, given the tour today by Sean, there's lots happening on architectural, landscape architecture, architectural issues at Saddleback College. So there's just, there's a lot going on. So it's good to see this. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 10.5, Professional Services Agreement, DiAG, USA Foundation.
So move. Okay, your second.
Motion trustee Dack. Second trustee Milchiker. Any questions on this? Looks positive. I agree. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.6, contract, cogeneration contract and central plan operation, maintenance at Saddleback College, Viola Sustainable Buildings, USA West.
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a 6-0 trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. 10.7, Saddleback College Gateway Building. This is a change order. Did see it. Looked at it in the agenda, so it is a change. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second trustee Milchiker. Any questions? No? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.8, Saddleback College Community Education Professional Services Master Agreement with CAPO Unified. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Let's vote on the item. Item is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 10.9, License Agreement for Communications Facilities at the AT&amp;T Cell Tower.
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, there's other cell companies out there. Does this preclude us from accepting other towers? Or is this an exclusive?
I believe for the term or the contract, it is exclusive. Nope, it's not exclusive at any time.
So if other Verizon or T-Mobile wanted to put a tower on as well, they would come to us?
We are, yeah. We have T-Mobile, this is the second one.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was here when we put one of them on years ago.
All right, it's not exclusive. So any other questions? Let's vote on the item. All right, the motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. I am going to move to extend the meeting until 10:15 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the extension. The item is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We are now on to Human Resources, 11.1, Academic Employees and Academic Classified Administrators Manage Your Personnel Actions Ratifications.
No changes, but we do have two contracts. Let me quickly read them. Director of Disabled Student Programs and Services, Laura Chikowski. Contract dates April 15, 2024 through June 30, 2026. Range 17, Step 2. Annual Salary 154, 716. The second position is also Director of Disabled Student Programs and Services. That employee name is Maria Ekowel. Contract dates April 4, 2024 through June 30, 2026. Range and step 17, 7. Annual Salary 197, 44. Thank you.
Okay.
I just want to, just want to mention three longtime employees that are retiring. Just, I'll be fast. Melissa Klemowitz, who worked 33 years. Janine Obashan, a nursing instructor, who worked 21 years. And Ted Weatherford, who I took ballroom dancing from, is retiring after 20, 30 years. So thanks for your help.
All right, thank you for that recognition. Any, oh, I need, I need a motion for approval. Trustee Prendergast.
Second.
Second trustee Dack. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes to the item?
Yeah, just one, one person, Rena Mariota, an administrative assistant, is retiring after almost 13 years. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you again for that recognition.
Thank you.
Need a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion from trustee Dack. Second from trustee Milchiker. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Item carries on a 6-0 trustee yes vote and a student trustee abstention. Now on to Educational and Technology Services, the district's 2025-26 Academic Calendar.
So move.
Motion trustee Dack.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchiker. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. The motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We are, where's my screen? Okay. We're now on to 13.1, Staff Response to Public Comments from the previous board meeting. These are information items. 13.2, Monthly Financial Status Report. Do you have a question? Oh. And Saddleback College, 13.3, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. Written-in-own reports from the administration and governance groups. And we will start out with Chancellor Barnes.
I just have about 10 minutes worth of updates.
No, I'm just kidding. I am going to follow trustee Inman and just say, it's been a fabulous night to hear about all the recognitions with our faculty and our classified professionals. Our student Diego, who won his award, our wonderful trustee Hitty, student trustee Hitty, who's done a fabulous job this year. And so I just feel very grateful to be amongst all these individuals. And each one of them have like great stories behind them that we didn't even illuminate. So thank you, everyone. So happy to be able to continue to work with you, and we. So happy to be able to continue to work with you, and we will be watching you when you go on to the next steps. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to IVC President, John Hernandez.
For the sake of time, no report.
Wow, all right. Saddleback College President, Elliot Stern.
In medieval times, no, no report.
Very impressive.
That's funny.
All right. We now have the Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
No report.
All right, Vice Chanc, if ever there was a night to, Vice Chancellor of Educational and Technology Services.
No report.
Yay.
All right, Vice Chancellor of HR.
Just quickly, on behalf of Kim Wittes, my executive director behind us, we want to thank and acknowledge Melissa Clemowitz, who will be retiring after 32 years. She has been an outstanding job steward for CSEA for our first five years. She's been in management the last year and a half doing good work, so congratulations to Melissa on her retirement. She has been a benefit to our district, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. That concludes our board meeting. We are now adjourned.